And as we are calling our meeting to order, we do want persons to recognize that the Lynchburg City School Board has adopted protocols, policies, and procedures that have been reviewed legally and have been disseminated to the public with proper notifications posted and on full display. And so, we do recognize that we have one person with us tonight who does have the proper information to be in the room without a mask because of the nature of the situation. And I won't get into the detail of that. But it appears that we have one other who believes he has that, but according to our procedures, does not. And so, we just want to let the... Is it more than that? Okay, well, I'm being told that there's more than one.
There's three.
Three, so...
It must be worn properly.
Okay. So, we're just... As an act of courtesy and decency, because here in Lynchburg, we are very concerned about getting to the business of dealing with kids and our process of educating our kids. With so much before us, and we need community support, yet at the same time, we have rules and procedures. And so, the three persons, other than there's one of those three maybe that you're not aware of that does have the legitimate information to be in the room without a mask according to procedures. But at least the other two probably do not. So, we will govern ourselves accordingly. The chair has acknowledged that. And that matter will be handled by those who will help us to handle that. With that in mind, Board, if you would just have trust in what I just said, we can move forward and approve our agenda as is stated in Section V1. There are a motion to approve the agenda.
A move that we approve the agenda.
And a move by Dr. Carter. Is that second? Second by Dr. Brennan, that we approve the agenda. There are no further questions or discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Section C is a notification of closed meeting. And at this time, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following as permitted by the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, Appointment or Promotion of Particular Officers, Appointees, or Employees. Is there a motion at this time to move into closed meeting for the coded purposes? So, a move by Ms. Morrison. Second by Dr. Carter. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. We do want to let the public know we're coming right back. We've got some things that we need to take care of. And we'll be right back. And thank you for your coming and participation. We're going downstairs, Board, to room downstairs. And we'll be right back.
And Ms. Pugh and Ms. LaCanage, because of the...
The school board chair would recommend now that the board approve the certification of a closed meeting in accordance with the code of Virginia's section 2.23712D. Is there such a motion for the certification of our closed meeting? Nothing was discussed other than what was announced to the public to participate in. Yes. First motion is that we come out of closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of the closed meeting?
A move that we come out of closed meeting?
Move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Nellis. And if further questions or discussion, here and none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Is there a motion now to certify?
Move to certify. What was indicated in the motion to go in a closed meeting?
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Is there a second?
Second.
At this point, I would now ask the clerk to certify the meeting. Call in the roll.
School board member, Mr. Trost.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Morrison.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Koopda.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We're going to now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We will now move to section D1, which is public comments. And as the chair, I would first just want to say throughout the meeting as a theme, how important it is that you know that we understand and recognize the importance of face, family, and community engagement. And so throughout our meeting, we want to encourage persons as we help you to know where those areas may be, that you can help us as we seek to do what is best for kids. As it relates to our public comments tonight, we will move into those, and I do have a list of those persons who are here to give comments. I do want to acknowledge as we continue to go forward in this meeting, to move the meeting along in a swift but substantive way. I would encourage the audience to understand that the chair will have no tolerance for any disruption in our meeting tonight. The chair and the board, I believe, we can say together that all of the rules that must be followed, must be followed. I do want to acknowledge the fact that our mask policy is very much intact, and we are very much in compliance with that. And we want to thank appropriate legal authorities for speaking to individuals who did not have a mask on and did not have a medical accommodation, and that at least one individual in a polite manner left the premises. And I'm appreciative of that. Those who still are in the room without a mask have a medical accommodation in which, according to our school board attorney, is satisfactory to be present in our meeting. in our meeting as of right now. But I will have no tolerance for anyone speaking out of turn or disrupting the meeting at all. Having said that, we will now acknowledge the public comments. And those public comments, persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes, and public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise answer questions, engage in discussion at this time. Clerk has informed me that we have no written correspondences or telephone correspondences to be shared tonight, and so I will call the names as they were given to me by the clerk tonight. I must acknowledge that the first one on the list says Director, and it is coming from Parkview Community Missions around Food for Thought. And I'm not sure if that is the Director or if it's George Jones. George, come right on up. Welcome.
Good evening. It's George Joyner.
Joyner, yes.
And I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors for Parkview Community Mission. And thank you, Dr. Coleman, for this opportunity to speak to the board.
Thank you.
And with me is Julie Farley, our Director of our Food for Thought program.
Wow.
And I must say, Dr. Coleman, although never having met you, I feel like I know you, having seen our promotional video so many times. So thank you for participating. We wanted to come down, the board felt it long overdue, to offer a thank you to three of your administrators. And so that's what I'm here tonight to do. And first, I'd like to give a little overview of our Food for Thought program. Food for Thought began in the fall of 2018. And frankly, we've seen an increase in our backpacks distributed each year. And just to add a little perspective, in 2019, we served 28,730 children. In the year 2020, we served 30,269 children. We feel that's an awful lot. The program has the support of dozens of local volunteers, and quite frankly, college students, who helped pack the food bags, deliver to the schools, and assist in a host of other roles to assure the program runs smoothly. Currently, we're serving 21 schools in the Lynchburg City School System. Through the support of Lynchburg City Schools Nutrition Department, Food for Thought was able to continue to serve the school system, families, through curbside pickup when the students began learning virtually. We at Parkview have had to learn, just like everyone in society, to pivot. And frankly, we're having to change our model frequently. Our Food for Thought program in, I call it, I don't know what you all would call it. We call it face-to-face learning, if I'm speaking correctly. I see a few heads nodding and saying maybe. We collaborate with your Office of Equity and Community Relations to ensure schools know of the resource for students and the proper number of food bags arrive at the schools by Friday for students to bring home for the weekend. And I will tell you, that department frankly has a very heavy lift to coordinate that with the schools, the principals, the guidance counselors, and then to coordinate with us. And so this evening, I'd like to thank, on behalf of our Board of Directors, our Director, three people. First, Dr. Edwards. When the program started, it took quite a leap of faith. To have faith in a local organization, to have trust in us, to serve a very precious commodity, the children of Lynchburg. You had faith, you had a vision, and you entrusted us with that and with your schools and your administration. And I think with the numbers, you all would agree, what a great job. And we thank you, and we thank your continued support. Bravo. Your Director of School Nutrition, Beth Morris. When we went to the virtual learning, Beth took on the program to help facilitate the curbside delivery. And she, and that was a learning for all of us. And she helped facilitate that with the guidance counselors, with our team, with the delivery people, and she did a wonderful, wonderful job. And then Ms. Reeves, the Director of Equity and Community Relations. In the face-to-face learning prior to COVID, and now starting anew, I will tell you, in her second life, she could be a juggler. Because she is just that. I've had the opportunities to eavesdrop on the phone when she's talking to me, and she took a call from the Department of Transportation. She has many irons in the fire, and she does a wonderful job. But she made it very clear to me and to our Director that her number-one mission is that no child go hungry. We have her cellphone. We've been instructed to call her day or night if we have any issues that she wants children fed, and she will be our champion. So, nothing controversial tonight from us. We just want to say, thank you. You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And we're off to a busy school year, and we're there to support the children too, Dr. Coleman. So many thanks, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Parkview Community Missions. All right, our next speaker is Andrew Glover, Conservative Parents of Lynchburg.
Thank you. I feel so welcomed here. You know, that was the second time that LCS has attempted to arrest me. My name's Andrew Glover, and tonight I represent the Conservative Parents of Lynchburg, a group of over 300 Lynchburg City caregivers who are concerned with the direction of the public education that public education is heading in Lynchburg City. This concern is most recently justified, not just by tonight, but also are warnings over the last 16 months validated with the release of the state of Virginia's Standards of Learning Results, which demonstrated that over half of LCS failed to pass their SOLs. More particularly, across all grades, 39% of the school failed reading, 51% failed history, 53% failed science, 54% failed writing, and 64% of students failed math. Because I always believed that statistics and numbers need to be put in context, what that means is that 4,100 Lynchburg City students failed at least one class, many more, several. Now, I know what you're going to say. Well, we were in a pandemic. And that's true. But so was the rest of the state of Virginia. Yet, the rest of the state of Virginia did 38% better than LCS in academic performance. This is a bleak picture and should make every Lynchburg City parent and grandparents' blood boil. But it was not an unforeseeable event. It's one that we've been warning about and trying to prevent for 16 months. And I am here once again to give you a warning and provide a solution, and I pray that you finally listen. Because I know that you've demonstrated that you struggle with history, I'd like to start with a civics lesson, which is to read the preamble of the Declaration of Independence, which states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." I'd also like to read another foundational statement from an even more important document, the Bible, where in Genesis 1, we are told, "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth." Simply put, God is the Creator of heaven and earth, and is the source of all natural law, which forms the basis of scientific law. On top of that, God is the Creator of our unalienable rights, life and liberty. This means that unlike false science that you try to hide behind with your mask mandates, true and accurate science will never infringe on freedoms and liberty. This is not just a philosophical belief. It is, in fact, a foundational religious belief that is shared by members of our group, members of our community, and our founding fathers, and one that I was just trying to be arrested on. Unfortunately, the LCS school administration has failed to respect these beliefs and is actively discriminating against our group's members and others who have submitted religious exemption requests for masks in school. Such discrimination is the violation of not only the Virginia Human Rights Act, but also Federal Civil Rights Act. Members of the school board, you have policies in place to affirm that a boy can be a girl, and that a girl can be a boy, and that those psychologically delicate individuals are allowed in each other's bathrooms? Then you very well need to have a policy that affirms our religious beliefs that allow families to make their own medical decisions for their families. The current health order, there is an exemption for students drinking, playing sports, playing instruments, being outside. Members of the school board, our religious rights are equal to, if not more important, than a student's right to play sports. You may not agree with us, but you may not discriminate against us. Tonight, you must instruct the superintendent to immediately and fully honor any religious exemption for school mask requests submitted to the school, which is in accordance with the last paragraph of the current VA Health Order, along with the Virginia Human Rights Act, which reads, "Whereas Virginia Human Rights Act safeguards all individuals within the Commonwealth with unlawful discrimination because of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, pregnancy, childbirth, including, or disability, and places of public accommodation, including educational institutes." You are not a private institute. You are a public institute, and you may not discriminate against sincerely-held religious beliefs. Thank you.
Dr. Patricia Powers is coming to share with us concerning face masks.
Thank you all. Thank you, members of the board, for this chance to speak to you again. I was here last month, and you all know from what I said last month that I am against mask mandates. The preponderance of evidence does not support their efficacy in the community setting. I sent you all earlier today a list of references and research on that subject, and it also included some references on how this is harmful for children. I do agree with Mr. Glover. I think that you must honor religious exemptions. But honestly, you must honor exemptions just for personal preference. The whole concept of a mask, which is authorized under emergency use, really cannot be mandated according to U.S. Code, which is 21 U.S. Code 360BBB-3, which says that no emergency-authorized medical product can be mandated. So my question to the board is, what do you do with this research that I have sent you? And what do you do with this legal code? How do you accommodate what's already written into the legislation? Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Flood from Virginia Organizers.
Flood, step there he is. Somebody lose him up there? Or just the microphone? Oh, okay. First of all, I think the school board gave me not a chance to... Jesus, what is this? Tonight, I'm once again talking about returning citizens and being able to volunteer. It's the third time I received this letter from Reverend Coleman. And basically, this is my third letter I've ever got from Reverend Coleman. And basically, it's stating that, thank you for taking the opportunity to come out to do what I'm doing now. But I still haven't got the answer that I'm looking for, because we've been talking about this since 2015. And I know that y'all have went somewhere to a school board convention or somebody else adopted this, letting returning citizens volunteer. Now, I don't know what they're doing, but we don't feel like, you know, stonewalling. I haven't heard nothing. I know that the virus played a part. I understand, but we're back in session. We're moving. That's one reason why I did not go up there and shake kids' hands when they got off the bus. They can see me outside, but they can't see me inside? So why should I do that? I'm just one of the few people that didn't want to go up there because of that. We need some answers better than what I'm getting from Reverend Coleman. Where are we at with this? We voted on it, 6-2. We want to change it, and we just had a standstill. It started back in 2015 to 2021. We had a little setback, understandable. But where are we going now? I just need to know something, because I'm going to keep coming back. You know, I'm glad that y'all had a mandatory face mask. Last month, I was down here, and a young man, I don't know who he was, he came up and spoke. And I ain't think about it till you. Looked around, and then see people with masks on. Y'all run this school board. Ain't nobody above the law. If you don't want to be here with all the masks, why don't you stay at home? I don't understand. You let them get away where they think they got power. They ain't got nothing. Y'all run this school board. And he says something that, how can we set example for these kids when we don't do the right thing by following rules? How can we do that? And got to there to preach about something that we want everybody to know, to make, just to make some noise. You know, y'all are the school board. We are the people come to speak like I'm speaking. Don't let nobody control the school board but the school board members. And if y'all says it's mandatory to wear a mask, if they can't wear it, tell them go home. You know, that's why they got Lynchburg families. You know, make up all the excuses in the world why they don't need to wear a mask. But it saves lives. And people don't understand that until they see somebody up in the hospital, kids, grown folks dying because they didn't want to wear a mask and want to get a shot. Then they make excuse, oh, I forgot to do it. I came here just to talk about returning citizens, but then I come here and see this mess. It's ridiculous. One person won't stop y'all from doing what y'all supposed to be doing? Ain't nobody above the law. And don't y'all allow that to happen? I don't care who it is. Y'all run the school board. And I'm going to be on you. And I feel that ain't right. I don't care if you're black, white, or whatever color. Right is right, wrong is wrong. And it's a shame that we have to take up a half an hour to go through this pedestal. Don't make sense. God bless all of y'all, right and wrong.
Next speaker is Jeffrey Wooters to talk about COVID mitigation.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Wooters. I am a senior at Central Virginia Governor's School and Easy Glass High School here in Lynchburg. Philippians Chapter 2, Verses 3 and 4 tells us, "Do nothing from selfish ambition or conceit, but in humility count others more significant than yourselves. Let each of you look not only to his own interests, but also to the interests of others." Some members of this community finding their dubious at best scientific claims and claims about their civil liberties being violated, falling on deaf ears, have decided to turn to some deeply rehearsed religious exemptions in a last-ditch effort to get themselves to be able to walk around school property without wearing a mask. And I am just here to remind you that these are completely bogus. It has been 16 months since the beginning of this pandemic, March 2020, when we began to wear these masks, and finally figure out and finally figure out what it was that we were dealing with. Not a peep, then. Religious exemptions and religious beliefs don't wait 16 months, they're there their entire life. Matthew, Chapter 7, verse 12, tells us, "So whatever you wish that others would do to you, do also to them." It's the golden rule. I'm wearing my mask because I respect you. I want to show you that I respect you, and that I respect your health, and I want you to stay healthy. And I know that in wearing masks, you all do the same for me, and for that, I'm appreciative. As one last note, mask wearing is completely biblical. Leviticus, Chapter 13, verse 45, says, "Anyone with such a defiling disease must wear torn clothes, let their hair be unkempt, cover the lower part of their face, and cry out, 'Unclean, unclean.'" But I'm no priest, but I do have some statistics to give you. I want to compare the University of Lynchburg versus Liberty University. At University of Lynchburg, out of 2,956 students there, there are nine positive COVID cases. At Liberty University, of a student body of 15,000, there are 430. At University of Lynchburg, .3 of the student body population, .3% is positive, and at Liberty, 2.8%. If we were to apply those percentages to Lynchburg City Schools, that's the difference between 25 students getting sick and 235. There is one way to beat this pandemic, and it's to do what the University of Lynchburg is doing and is succeeding at doing. We must require masks, and we must require vaccinations. That is the only way we can beat this pandemic. I've done what I'm supposed to do this entire pandemic. I've worn my mask, I've gotten my shots, and it's long past time the rest of the city does too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carl Luce, representing the Lynchburg Education Association.
Good evening to all of you, and thank you again for the opportunity to address you. Again, my name is Carl Luce, and I'm president of Lynchburg Education Association. I come here tonight not to address dubious claims of religious or health exemptions from a mask mandate that LCS is completely within its legal rights to have, nor am I here to explain the historical context of the Declaration of Independence or the Bible. The reason I am here tonight is to address the dire situation in Lynchburg City Schools that exists currently, and is only going to be compounded in the coming years, unless something is done now. The LEA sent out a Labor Day weekend survey to its members to see how employees are feeling as we begin the school year. And while the data is still coming in, the numbers we have so far from nearly every site in the district are disturbing. Asked how they would rate the start of this year, 45.3% said, "Not too good, more challenges than I would like," while 34% said, "Awful, one of the worst starts to the year I have ever had." That means that more than 79% of your staff who responded are struggling less than four weeks into the year. When we look at the concerns of staff, we see that COVID-19 concerns top the list, 79.2%. As people worry about the lack of supplies to clean, lack of proper social distancing, increasing cases, and distrust of the numbers posted by the division. Right behind that, at 75.5%, is the feeling of being overwhelmed. This goes hand in hand with number three on the list, too heavy of a workload. We have staff that are working straight through days with no breaks. They are covering classes, doing lunch duties, and filling positions that HR can't fill. They are also not being adequately compensated for these positions. Student behavior is a top concern as well, as we have an ineffective and confusing plan in place that is wildly inconsistent across the division. The LEA wanted to know what we should be addressing with LCS leadership and the board. Quite often, I'm standing here addressing the issue of inadequate pay. Guess where that was on the list? Not even in the top three. COVID concerns, the shortage of staff in buildings and transportation, and staff workload, all dwarfed pay concerns. Oh, and by the way, the mental health of staff rounded out the top five. So if we live and die by the data, what does this data tell us? Your employees are hurting. They don't feel safe, they don't feel supported, they don't feel heard. If this continues, the staff shortage will only worsen. LCS needs to act now, and needs to act decisively. We want to see more people employed in the schools. We want to see LCS administration in the buildings and addressing these issues directly. We want employees to have a say in the amount and types of testing being done. We want a student discipline program that is effective, and not only easy to understand, but easy to implement. We want CARES Act funding to be used to keep our staff and students safe. Mostly, we want to be supportive. The first question on the survey of staff was how staff rated the start of the year. At 0% was great. The second question asked, what have the positives of this school year been? The top three answers were, my colleagues have been really great, support from my site administrators, and the kids, in that order. At 0%, with not a single person choosing it, support from LCS administration. The data is clear, and the LEA stands ready to lead. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kendra Seawright with the Army Recruiters Association.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. I'm Staff Sergeant Seawright with the United States Army Recruiter's Office here in Lynchburg. Army recruiters are assigned to each school within the district. So first, I want to take this time to thank you for allowing us to be able to work with your students and work with the schools. Our reason for coming today is because, like yourselves, we're concerned with the COVID-19 virus, and how it's affecting the students and their ability to learn and receive available resources for the future, specifically with the benefits of the military. We absolutely understand that safety is the number one priority for each and every student. I myself have a son who attends Heritage High School, so I understand. While I understand the concern for the safety, I believe we'll be doing a disservice to our students by not being allowed to be present to offer them the support and answers they may need when it comes to military service. Last year, during the start of the pandemic, we brainstormed different ways to reach your students by way of virtual platforms and virtual career fairs, for example. Although this was sincerely appreciated, it yielded very little results. All students were not mandated to attend the briefs. And additionally, students are more receptive to information when it's in a more face-to-face setting. Upon graduation, I talked to many students in the Lynchburg City School System and realized that many of them did not know about the options they could have had as far as the military is concerned. Whether they'd enrolled in college, had already accrued student loan debt, and things like that, where we could have helped out. I recently went to a football game, and was surprised to see there intermingling amongst the fans from the opposing school and the general public with very little restriction. All I ask is that you please consider the military recruiters in the school the same way as we allow our athletic opponents. Bedford County Schools has approved us to access their schools, and in doing so, it has already led to many interested students talking to us, reaching out, and making plans for military service. Students should have access to all available options following their high school career, and by limiting access to the schools, we're not able to share this information with the wider student body. Today, I proposed following COVID mitigation strategies within the CDC guidelines to ensure we help keep the student body safe, while also presenting them with the available options and information to better their lives. Each recruiter will be required to wear an N95 mask, latex gloves, and maintain six feet of separation behind a tabletop barrier, which we will provide. We will ensure our brochures, pens, lanyards, or any other items that we usually give away are sanitized and packaged separately prior to entering the school. We will also refrain from shaking hands and doing things like that, everything which will help us reside within the standard. As a mother of a Lynchburg City School student, I absolutely understand the importance of safety. But as a service member, I also understand the importance of ensuring our students receive fair access to all the possible careers in a way that actually reaches and resonates with them, which would be face-to-face. Thank you.
Deputy Superintendent, how much time do we have left?
That was 31 minutes.
All right, we do have one speaker left here, and the time is over. So we, let's the board acknowledge this. Otherwise, our time for public comments has ended, and we'd be delighted to have transcripts of any of the speeches or presentations that have been made, and certainly we'll have opportunity at our next meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Can I do it, can I be mine for two, three minutes?
I make a motion, enlarge the time for one speaker.
Maybe if she wears her mask properly? Or are we just being capricious about that with her too? What have you done earlier?
Yeah, thank you, sir, thank you. If there's no second to Mr. Tross, then we would have to hear from that person the next time. Thank you very much. We will now move on into the next portion of our meeting, and that will be E1, which is the financial report. Dr. Edwards and Ms. Laconic.
So before Ms. Laconic does the finance report, we were scheduled for the September work session to go over the CARES funding, and with the work session being changed, we're going to move that to the October regular business instead of the September work session. So I'll give a brief CARES when we get to our LCS update, but I did want to let the board know that due to the change in our work session, we're making a change in the CARES funding. And Ms. Laconic, the July financial report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting the first month's financials for the new fiscal year, June, July 31st, 2021. Our new operating budget is $100,308,875. The revenue received to date, we received 3.42% of the revenue, and our expenditures to date are 3.12%. I have included the revenue attachment and the expenditure attachment. On the revenue, just wanted to point out, you're going to see, just like last year, the state revenue you're going to receive is, you're going to see the SOQ funded, because that comes in over equal installments. Some of the revenue, you won't see, if it's categorical or lottery funded, you won't see that till later in the school year. For the expenditures, I wanted to point out that we did roll over the open POs from last year, so you may see some non-personnel that's over budget. Just know that once we finish out the audit and everything is rolled over, you will see the budget that was pending from last year roll over into this year. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Laconic tonight? Thank you so much, Ms. Laconic, for the July financial report. We'll now move to our consent agenda, item F. And as we are there tonight, there are six items that are part of this consent agenda. Number one, the school board meeting minutes on the August 3rd meetings, the school board work session, August 17th, the CAC Committee membership for 2122, religious exemption, human resource report, and human resource report addendum. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
It's a motion by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion concerning section F? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
School board member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries a nine to zero.
Thank you, we will now move to the section.
Can I jump in?
Oh, absolutely. Excuse me, I'm trying to move us along. We have an important announcement by the superintendent.
Yes, we do, thank you. And with that nine to O motion included in the consent agenda was approval for our new transportation director, who, it is my proud moment to announce, Ms. Hope Custer as the new Director of Transportation. Ms. Custer currently serves as the Assistant General Manager of the GLTC, Greater Lynchburg Transit Company, and she is going to be joining us on October 4th. We're excited about that. She has a bachelor's degree in transportation and logistics management, in addition to a graduate certificate in logistics management, both from American Military University in Washington, DC. She has her professional strength in leading teams in a dynamic, fast-paced environment, which we know, right now, that is what we are experiencing in LCS with all of the changes. And she has a seasoned and logistical approach to transportation management, something that we all look forward to working with her. So I do not see her, can't see to the side, so I do not see her here tonight, but if you could all join me in welcoming Ms. Custer as our new transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and we are moving triumphantly forward in that area of our LCS family. Thank you so much. We will now move to section G, our Comprehensive Strategic Plan. And the first item will be our enrollment management, and we're going to ask Dr. Edwards to lead us in there.
Absolutely. So returning to our board agenda, section G is our Comprehensive Strategic Plan, which we had pre-COVID, and then COVID kind of took us offline a little bit, but now, we're back to reporting out on the goals on our Comprehensive Strategic Plan. And objective 3.2.1 is about enrollment management. And you know, there are many, many ways to take the enrollment. We have the membership, we have the daily attendance, we have counts that include pre-K, counts that don't include pre-K, counts that include students with disabilities. So I will give you the total count, because as we look at it, it's all about all of the students that we serve. So as of 9/1/2021, including pre-K and our students with disabilities and our virtual academy students, we have 700, I'm sorry, 700, 7,848 students. This time last year, we had 7,925 students. So, I'm sorry, 825 students. So we are up by 23 students. Thank you, Ms. Pugh, I looked at that and knew that was the typo. For our pre-K enrollment, we have about 326 students in our pre-K program. That includes our pre-K 3 pilot program as well. Most of our students, 181 of them are at Hutcheson, 62 of them are at Paul Monroe, 36 at Perrymont, and 47 are at RS Payne Elementary School. In terms of enrollment management, I just kind of want to go over this a little bit. Part of what we're doing, and Mr. Gaskia will talk about this a little bit later, with the facility study, there's a demographic piece of the facility study. So we are waiting until we get to complete study. But what do we do in the meantime? You all know that we have some K3 class size reduction funds that keep our class sizes pretty relatively small, not as small as they were last year when we had hybrid classes. But in most instances, 19, 20, 21, 22 students in our classes. And so, as we enroll, and we do encourage our families to enroll, finish all their paperwork early. And this is important, because the earlier that our families complete the paperwork, especially if they move, the quicker we can get our bus routes together. And we did experience some delay in that. We can also guarantee our class sizes. And whenever we have class sizes that start to creep up in one school, one of our mitigation strategies for enrollment, not for COVID, but for enrollment, is to look at the class sizes for the same grade levels in other schools. And rather than saying, in school A, we're going to have to increase by, you know, hiring another teacher because we have one or two more students, we do look at schools B, C, D, and E and say, is it possible that the new students, new enrolled students, new to Lynchburg, can be enrolled in schools that have a smaller, let's say, grade 2 class than the current grade 2 at school A? So it's one way of being cost savings without increasing the staff size at every elementary school, if we were to have staff that, students that go over that class size enrollment. It is a strategy, it is not perfect. Sometimes it doesn't work out, there's not a school that the family can get their children to close by, and we end up having to make adjustments. The other enrollment management strategy that we use at the elementary level is, prior to the start of school, if we were slated to have, and I'll give you an example, four first grade classes. And it looks like our first grade numbers are down, but our second grade numbers are up. Rather than just having four first grade classes and hiring an additional second grade teacher, our first strategy is to transfer a staff member, perhaps from first grade to second grade, to fill that increased number of students at the second grade level. And again, we do this by talking with our building principals and making sure that we're not doing anything that's going to cause any staff overages or underage, as well as looking at the student population. So those are two ways that we try to keep costs down without automatically hiring new teachers when class sizes go up in one of- when class sizes get, go up in one of our 10, 11 elementary schools, as we would have it. Again, one of the things that we are trying to do our best right now is hire staff. And for quite some time, you've heard that there was a bus driver shortage. And we've talked about that, and we've talked about some strategies for, to do that. But what we're seeing is a shortage across the board, and this is something that's being mirrored in the city as well as nationally, you can see places that have not talked about shortages before are now talking about shortages. We too at Lynchburg City are seeing that in various areas. We're seeing it in instructional assistants, we're seeing it in transportation, we're seeing it in teaching. And this is probably one of the first years that we've started where we've significantly seen it in teaching. And when I say shortage, I want you to understand, there are times when a principal will open up the, the talent ed portal, which is where our applicants apply, and there are no applicants at all for them to look at. So this is something that we've been talking about here in Lynchburg City Schools. It's a topic of conversation with my superintendent colleagues that are close by us. It's a topic of conversation with my superintendent colleagues that are in Region 5. And quite frankly, it's a topic of conversation at the state level that we are experiencing shortages. So we are continuing strategies like grow our own, provide opportunities for training, upboarding, experiences that our staff could have so that they can move to the next level. We're working with several instructional assistants who are on their way to becoming teachers so that we can help feed our pipeline. That being said, one of the things that we have not done consistently or to a high degree because of COVID is volunteers. Last year, when we found ourselves in the middle of a pandemic and we were following state guidelines, we pretty much closed doors to all volunteers in our school. And that was to minimize exposure and also contact tracing. It's very difficult when you have different people coming in and out of your, your buildings. To that degree, last year, we started by having what we call building-based substitutes. So we try to assign a sub to a building and stay in that building rather than moving from school to school to school, again, to minimize the spread of COVID and contact tracing. We are continuing to do that. We have not opened our buildings back up for full-scale volunteers. So I know Mr. Flood is not here, but I did want to mention that as he's asked, where are we? And it's not just returning citizens, it's all citizens that we've pretty much kept a tight rein on volunteers. And notice I said almost not all. The one area where we are still trying not to close off the pipeline is with student teachers and to some degree, practicum teachers and certain interns. We want to make sure that we still offer opportunities for students to get their teaching experience. That's our population that we're going to be hiring, whether or not they're working with our nurses in our classrooms. So we have tried our best to continue to offer those opportunities. But when the schools, the colleges that these students attend quarantine themselves and, and prevent the students from attending in-person learning on their college campus, we follow suit by also quarantining and preventing in-person instruction on our campus. They can still participate virtually, but we're just trying to, as a, as part of the city, to slow the spread of COVID and quarantine. So I did want to mention that while I was talking about our buildings and our enrollment under that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. That was nicely stated. Any questions from the board around Dr. Gupta?
So based on one statistics, there are about 12,499 school-aged children in the city of Lynchburg. Where do you think that gap is going? To private schools, homeschool, between our ADMs and that 12,499?
Well, when we looked at the statistics before, Dr. Gupta, if you looked at the chart that I did when I did the budget, you will see that it's more of our early elementary students, kindergarten. We did have some families that delayed entry into kindergarten this year, which is, is perfectly okay for them to do. And some families actually move out of Lynchburg before they become enrolled in our schools. So that's one of the things when I talked about the facility study and the demographics that we really want to take a closer look at. And quite frankly, we were hoping that we'd be well past COVID so that we wouldn't have the interruptions of families keeping their students home or looking for virtual options at this point. And speaking of virtual options, but I think you're, you're going to get to that when you talk about your part.
I just want to go on record that I am a citizen of Lynchburg, Virginia, and I love it as a citizen of Lynchburg, Virginia. And all of my children have been educated in Lynchburg City Schools, and I love that. They're enrolled, and they're going to stay enrolled. All right? Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? All right, G2, facilities.
Okay. I've asked Mr. Gasky to come and give us a quick update on our facilities study, which you all approved at a previous board meeting for us to move forward. And, and just a reminder that this is a study that we commissioned here in Lynchburg City Schools. And Ms. Laconic and Mr. Gasky, myself, Ms. Pugh worked with city administration. So it was a collaborative effort to start the facility study, put out an RFP, we evaluated it, and we are moving forward. This is in response to what used to be on our capital improvement plan. Several years back when I first started was to build a new elementary school. And so we have moved forward with the facility study, and I've asked Mr. Gasky to give us an update on timelines and expectations.
Well, good evening. So the facility study is underway. On August 17th, Rick Thompson, Don Floyd, and I met with Dominion 7 and their partners, Hurt and Profit, to discuss, to, excuse me, to discuss the site surveys. Hurt and Profit is a civil engineering firm, and so they are doing basically everything outside of the buildings, looking at the parking lots, playgrounds, athletic facilities, and things like that. On the 18th, the three of us also met with Dominion 7 and Southern Air. Southern Air is a local, basically HVAC contractor. They also do electrical and plumbing. And they are conducting the surveys of the buildings. And as far as HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and all of that. Dominion 7 will be doing the surveys pertaining to structural as well as like roofing and things like that. So we met on the 17th and 18th and, and kind of drew up some, let's say, ground rules as to how the surveys were to be conducted by, by the teams in the schools so they'd be as least disruptive as they can, could be. We are notifying all the schools prior to the visits, so the principals and the staff are ready for them. Right now, we're doing surveys every Tuesday and Thursdays, and we're concentrating on the elementaries at this point. We have, for all the site surveys, we're about 25% done. For the elementaries, we're about 40, if you take, give or take one or two. But so Paul Monroe, Bedford Hills, Bass, Hutchison, and Lincoln Elementary have all been completed at this point. And Sheffield will happen on Thursday, and then we continue on through the rest of the elementaries. And then in, and those will be finished by the end of September. Then we move on to the middle schools and high schools, and those will be done by the end of October. So we are anticipating to have, by early November, a recommendation from Dominion 7 and their partners on a five-year CIP plan. As far as presentations and everything, the schedule calls for in November for there to be a presentation to the school board giving an update as to where they are with the, the study in total, but also to have the CIP recommendation for the next five years. And then after that, in March, we have a school board presentation for the final report. In April would be a, basically an approval, another visit by Dominion 7 for the final approval and everything of the report. And then also in April, a final report to city council. As the teams are going through, I do want to mention that they are meeting with the principals and the school staff and discussing programming and demographics. So that is also a part of the, of the report, and they're doing it as they visit the sites so that they can get an idea of what the school looks like, what the site looks like, and then get an idea from the staff as to how everything works and what they think might be needed in the future.
All right, Dr. Edwards, anyone that could shed some light on this?
Well, I just wanted to add that persons may be wondering, why are we sharing our results with the city council? And I just want to remind everybody that the city council, the city owns our school building. So when we get back the results from a facility study about the conditions of the building, which will also, as Mr. Gasky talked about, the internal workings, demographics, programming on our end, it, it behooves us to work collaboratively with the city. So we want it to be as transparent as possible while we're in the middle of the process and letting our residents know where we are. Because when the recommendations come back, they are recommendations for the city of Lynchburg and schooling in the city of Lynchburg. So we really want to do our due diligence and make this as public and as transparent as possible.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Edwards and Mr. Gasky. And for the administration and others are doing a great job in getting this together, and all board members are aware of the timeline concerning this as we work throughout the division with our facilities situation. All right. Thank you, sir. G3 is going to be Technology 3.43. Dr. Edwards, Ms. Pugh?
Yes. So this was a new objective, which is the creation of the LCS Virtual Academy in response to what we experienced last year with the pandemic and recognizing that for some families, they enjoyed virtual learning, they were successful doing virtual learning, and they asked us to keep that as an option for learning going forward. And while I'm on that, yeah, I'm going to just take a pause and remind our board and our community about Senate Bill 1303, because I get this question a lot. What's different this year that, from last year? This year with Senate Bill 1303, one of the biggest things was that we would offer in-person learning five days a week for all of our students, which is something that we have been doing since August 11th. Our schools are open five days a week, all of our students. Well, what does that look like? It looks like three to a seat on the school buses with masks on as we bring our children in. And it looks like class size is very different than what we experienced last year, where we had class sizes of 12, 14, 16, 18. Now we have class sizes of 18, 20, and I'm told today upwards to 28, with trying to maintain as best as feasibly possible three feet of space between our children and also mitigating how we eat lunch and do other large group activities. Last year, we offered hybrid instruction two days a week to students. So they, they came on the AA day or the BB day, which would have been Tuesday and Wednesday, or Thursday and Friday. And we offered our staff, Mondays was a virtual learning day, but it also gave the staff time to prepare for the dual role that they had. And by dual role, they taught in person, worked with kids in front of them, and worked with those families. And then they also worked with kids remotely, worked with those families, and spent considerable time either doing home visits or phone calls or emails or working virtually with students. And they, we use time on Mondays to do that. We also had a shorter day last year. We had a six-hour student day. The teacher day was not shorter because we wanted to give them at least an hour a day of extra prep time because we recognized that they were doing dual duty. They were working with students in person. They were also working with students who were hybrid, who were remote on the other day, other three days that they weren't attending, attending, and they were working with totally virtual students who had never stepped foot in our classrooms. Now, fast forward to today, what are our teachers doing? They're teaching five days a week, the entire day. There is no extra time like we had built into the schedule last year for teachers to run both a full in-person classroom with probably twice as many students as they had last year, who are also coming off of, in some instances, the pandemic has caused some trauma and some behaviors that we're seeing in our classrooms, and our teachers are dealing with that. So they don't have the same amount of time to also simultaneously teach students who are home remotely, full-time remote, at night remote, before school remote, or however you want, want to have that. So I think that, going to Mr. Luce, he left, but I think part of what he shared with us is just how overwhelming it is right now just for teachers in Lynchburg City, and I'm sure in other places as well. That being said, many of our families who were excited about the Virtual Academy signed up in advance. Some did not. They were hoping that they did not need a virtual option, and maybe, maybe feeling like right now, I wish I did. And they're probably on a waiting list. And the community may not understand, well, why aren't you offering hybrid like you did last year? Why aren't you offering remote learning like you did last year? Why aren't you doing what you did last year? And I just really wanted to point out that the law has changed. Our directive is really five days of instruction for every kid. That is the default learning program that we're offering to all Lynchburg City School children. And those who signed up for the Virtual Academy, which Ms. Pugh will talk a little bit more about, signed up probably before July 1, I want to say. And there are some complications with just saying everyone now can go virtual and be in the Virtual Academy. It doesn't work that way, and I've asked Ms. Pugh to kind of outline what's occurring in the Virtual Academy and why that's not an option for families who only want maybe a temporary virtual experience until COVID or until the Delta variant subsides. They really don't want virtual for the entire school year, the way the folks have signed up. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pugh to talk a little bit about virtual, then we'll take some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. As you mentioned, we are offering really two instructional models, the five-day in-person as well as our Lynchburg City Schools Virtual Academy. That is our option for virtual learning. And students have previously, as Dr. Edwards mentioned, have previously applied, and they've been enrolled. There was an application process, there was a vetting process for applications, and that was shared with the parents, the families, when they applied for their students to attend Virtual Academy. And there was a selection process, and parents could either accept to enroll their student if they had, had been accepted, or they could have changed their mind and gone to five days of in-person. So currently, the Virtual Academy is full. There are 191 students on the waiting list right now for the Virtual Academy across all grade levels. It varies from five, which is a small waiting list in first grade, all the way up to 25 in 11th grade. So the numbers at each grade level vary, but there is a waiting list at each grade level. The Virtual Academy students may return at any point to in-person instruction at any time throughout the year. So if there is a family who feels like the virtual option isn't working for their student, they can go back to their base school, to the five-person, five-day in-person learning. And at that time, when a student would leave, then the principal looks at the waiting list and takes that, the next student on the waiting list for that appropriate grade level. The students that are there are participating in remote virtual learning opportunities with LCS teachers. So as Dr. Edwards mentioned, our in-person teachers are our in-person teachers. Our Virtual Academy staff are our Virtual Academy staff. So we wanted to really make sure that we were not asking our in-person teachers to also have a responsibility for a virtual option. They are using online platforms, various different platforms for the different grade levels. Canvas, some Virtual Virginia courses, some Edgenuity courses, but they do have assigned LCS teachers. Students are participating in self-paced learning. Students are participating in self-paced learning, um, self-guided learning, as well as online learning sessions with the teacher. There are live learning sessions that take place on a regular basis, um, as it's really important for students to engage with that instructor, instructor, um, to ensure their success. Um, so as I mentioned, there are currently a hundred and ninety-one on the waiting list. And just to give you, um, kind of a sense of the staffing there, there is one teacher who is assigned to the kindergarten and first-grade students. Um, one teacher assigned to second and third-grade students. One teacher for fourth, one for fifth, and then, um, one, two, three, fi- six teachers who are split over the secondary, middle school, high school, and teaching a variety of courses. Um, the principal is also overseeing, um, and managing some courses, is, is a teacher of record there as well. So you can see it is a small staff. Um, we had proposed a staff of, of ten, um, and that also includes some, um, an office manager and a part-time guidance counselor. So it is a small staff and they are to capacity for, um, the number of students that they can take. And as Dr. Edwards mentioned, it really is, the program wasn't developed to be a temporary or transitory remote learning program. It is really for those students who thrived last year in the remote, um, setting and did very well, um, in that.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Dr. Carter, and then Mr. Harvey.
I have two things. Uh, how many do you know, or how many students have returned to in-person learning? Have, have any returned to in-person?
I do believe we've had maybe three that have returned to in-person learning, um, and he's filled those spots right away with students on the waiting list.
And the other thing is, is, will there be a spring signup? Is this just, so this is the entire year?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an opportunity or any way to enhance the number of students that can go?
I think we would have to increase first with the numbers that are on the waiting list, but in order for us to do that, we would have to have the capacity to hire additional staffing.
And just to back up, remember, we ran this as a pilot with COVID funding. So that's important, because we are always asked about, how are you gonna sustain all of this? Um, you know, and one of the things we're constantly looking at is our staffing model. So ten teachers is, I mean, it sounds small, but when you think about the funding and the sustainability of it, it was one of the reasons why we were being cautious with COVID dollars going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. A quick question about, um, and I, and I imagine this is probably gonna be somewhat of an obvious, uh, question or obvious answer, but I assume we're gonna be able to track performance. And I just wanted to know, is that performance gonna be tracked in a way that we can compare that against in-person learning, or will it be a separate model, uh, because it's somewhat of a separate learning style?
No, um, th- those students that are, are participating in the Virtual Academy are expected to take the same, um, you know, assessments that our other students take. So we mentioned last, at our last meeting, we talked about the baseline assessment data for reading and math using the iXL platform. Those students are participating in that, so we have a baseline for them. Those students are participating in the, uh, through-course assessments, the SOL, and Dr. Jordan's gonna talk a little bit about that in just a minute, the changes to the SOL administration. So they're participating in that. They have, um, you know, just as any classroom would, they have classroom assessments, um, end-of-unit tests and pre-test and post-test. So they are very much similar, it's just a different learning method. Um, and, um, so we will be able to look at those. And I do want to remind, these students are enrolled in their base school. So this is a program, it is not a school at this point. So those students that are, and I gave you that breakdown at our last meeting, I believe, um, of the, the number of schools, that, the number of students coming from each level, but also the number coming from each base school. So they are students enrolled in their base school, so their SOL scores will count toward the accreditation and the base school scores. It's not separate for the Virtual Academy.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Brennan?
This is a tangential question and may be answered during the LCS community update, but thank you very much to clarify line, the in-person learning in the schools and the virtual learning in the Virtual Academy. For students who are quarantined because of COVID, what services do they receive?
So, um, and, and we'll probably touch on that a little bit more, but when we, uh, shift or pivot, or are towards into a, um, learning, a temporary learning environment, depending upon how long that may be, which is usually up to ten days. Um, we do still offer Google Classroom and we still offer, um, uh, Seesaw, uh, as options for students to keep up. In some instances, we have the, um, comftel units in the classrooms where students may be able to, um, sort of come, come into a class. Uh, that's not ideal for a young student to be sitting in front of a computer for what would be the duration of a school day. And, um, in our mitigation plan, we talked about having targeted windows where students would be able to do that. And a lot depends on whether or not the entire class is, is, um, shifted to, um, in-person, I'm sorry, to remote learning. A few students, if it's the teacher, each situation is slightly different and what we're, we're seeing that we're having to do much more COVID quarantine, contact tracing, and responding to that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone, Dr. Carter, and then Dr. S- what, actually, Dr. Senha could go first, then Dr. Carter, please.
Just wanted to also note for the record that Senate Bill thirteen oh three requires that schools follow CDC mitigation guidelines, and so the issue of masks is not up to our discretion. Furthermore, we are in a state of emergency per the August twelfth memo from the State Health Commissioner mandating masks. It's the law.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Carter?
Dr. Edwards, can you break it down again or just provide more clarity? Because I get the messages about why haven't we closed schools? Because it's worse now.
Yeah.
And, and some parents, um, they found out that their child has been in touch or near someone on the bus and also in the classroom, and they can't get to the appointments to quick enough so they can get back in school with the negative COVID tests and so just, what is, so why would stopping us? And I know, but I just wanted to, so the weekend-
Thirteen oh three, we have to offer in-person learning, five days a week for all students, except for the period of time it would take to address whatever in-school transmission that we may have. So in other words, um, the VDH will define an outbreak as a positive case within schools that happened in schools from one person in the school to another person in the school. So let me give you a real-life scenario. Let's say this entire half of the room is all positive. And since we're all in the same room, and imagine if we're a little bit closer for more than fifteen minutes or more, that puts us at a quarantine risk. So all of us are at risk of not being in school tomorrow, let's just say, if we had to do some contact tracing. If the VDH determined that the positive cases are not related to one another. So in other words, you were at a party, you were at a beach, your uncle had it, everybody was somewhere and we cannot prove that because Sharon was positive and that's how Susan was positive, we do not have an outbreak. An outbreak is defined as we can, we can really connect the dots, saying that this is how it's spreading, schools not, well, they were all at that party and then they all came in, or they were all at that football game, or wherever they all may have been, or even separately. So it is not defined as an outbreak. That is what we experienced with Lincoln Elementary School. We had positive cases, we had quarantine, but we did not have in-school transmission. The way the bill is currently written and being interpreted is that we must consult with the VDH on every case, which we did. And once we said that, you know, here's our, here are our positive cases, everything has to be reported to VDH, they did not deem that we had an outbreak, so technically we should not shift to anything but in-person learning, is the way the law is written. Now, we ended up having to shift LES to remote learning for two days, and that has a lot to do with our mitigation, internal mitigation numbers, which in, in, in addition to what goes on in the city with COVID numbers and positivity rate, and our own five-day average and our quarantine rate, we do look at student absenteeism and staff absenteeism, a combination of quarantine and positive cases. And when we get to about thirty percent absenteeism, when you factor in those two things, especially at the staff level, it begins to compromise our ability to safely supervise kids. And I will say, since the start of school, we have been experiencing that in various buildings where we've had staff out, central office staff have covered, but we did not get to the compromise level until we were at LES. Um, this is an ongoing thing, almost every day we have a conversation with the building, and you can imagine COVID doesn't care, it goes into the night, past the workday, sometimes nine o'clock at night, it is not convenient for families, sometimes when we have to make, um, those calls. So each time we have to have that consult with the VDH, we did not have to do that to the same degree last year. If you remember last year, a little bit more flexibility in when and how long we could, um, shift to remote learning for that.
Mr. Harvey?
Uh, just, uh, Dr. Edwards, if you could clarify, just from my understanding. It, I heard Google Classroom and Seesaw. If we have a student who is being quarantined, or even a classroom is being quarantined for up to ten days, do they have access to a teacher, or is it just use of Google Class? They do have access to a-
It's, but they do have access to a teacher, um, throughout that time. It's, it's both, it's some synchronous access to a teacher versus asynchronous independent assignments through those two platforms. But yes, they certainly do have access to a teacher.
Okay.
We also make sure that they have access to the technology that they need. Um, so I'd, you know, really like to thank the tech, the, the IT department, um, when Lincoln Elementary closed on that Friday. Um, they were there for three or four hours, um, and families could drive by and get a device if they didn't have one. Um, so, you know, they're, we're working to make sure that we have the technology covered, that we have the meals covered. Um, you know, Beth Morrison, her team also offered, you know, the curbside pickup. So we've thought all of the different scenarios out, from five days of in-person to one student, one or two students being quarantined, to a whole class, several classes, a grade level, a school, and then if it should ever get to the point where, you know, s- the bill allows us to, to, to close schools if, if it's that severe. But we've thought it all out, but absolutely they have access to a teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, this is, uh, rich information and very informative to the community, and thank you, Dr. Edwards, for, uh, sharing this information. Uh, the, uh, last, uh, item under Conference of Strategic Plan is our Technology Objective three four, point four, point four. Uh, Dr. Edwards and Mr. Collins?
Sure, um, and these last two under Technology were added as a result of COVID, um, and just our experience with, um, a new digital divide in terms of the haves and have-nots, and as we experienced last year, with just making sure our families have access to high-speed internet. Um, in some cases, we provided Wi-Fi devices, um, but also looking at infrastructure and what we can do um, within our own buildings. You know, we put, um, Wi-Fi on our buildings, so people could be sitting outside in our parking lots, but looking throughout the city. So there are some grants, and I just want, um, Mr. Collins to kind of give you an update on where we are in terms of looking at some grants, and there, there he is. All right, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I'm going to share my screen, and I will try to not be too long-winded here. Uh, but I do want to tell you about some exciting stuff, uh, that we are doing with, uh, with wireless in particular, and hoping to do, uh, with CARES money. Uh, I'll start by saying that we have deployed, uh, close to five hundred hotspots to families that, that need it. Um, it's an ongoing need, so, um, that has recurring monthly costs associated with it. And, and it's a dynamic situation, a family may need it, uh, you know, this month, but not the next, so, um, we're trying to adjust for that. However, with CARES money, we do have a very unique opportunity, uh, to meet one of our strategic plan goals, and that's three, four, four, which is to build and expand on existing wireless access services program for students. Now, I hope you'll pardon my bad pun, but it was called WASP, W-A-S-P, but I decided that was a little too buzzwordy, so, um, renaming it, uh, to Project Wish. So this is Wireless Service at Home. And the whole goal of this program is to close the connectivity gap for our students. So, uh, how are we gonna do it? Well, the proposal, um, that I have for you is that we, uh, look at wherever kids are. So where, where are they? Are they, uh, at an apartment, are they at home? I should have thrown on a, a program here, like Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we put wireless towers around the city, uh, connect them to the LCS network, uh, and that would give them access to things like Infinite Campus and authentication and um, other teacher services that we could provide, uh, directly, uh, in-house. And because it also doesn't make a lot of sense for them to, uh, not access services that are cloud-hosted, uh, as a byproduct of this, uh, they would also have internet access. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, in just a minute. Um, we'd like to use the CBRS Spectrum, which stands for Citizens Broadband Radio Service. Uh, I'm not gonna go too in-depth on this, but, uh, good for you to know that it is, uh, on the three-point-five to three-point-seven gigahertz spectrum. No licenses required, so a lot of times with radio broadcasting, you do have to have a license, uh, not in this case. Uh, and Bloomberg Tech said it best, that it's more reliable than Wi-Fi and the technology that risks making Wi-Fi outmoded. Um, it's, uh, it's open, it's first come, first served, it was originally used by the Navy. Um, and then the FCC said, hey, the Navy only needs it in certain areas and they're not really using it, so let's make it available to communities. Uh, there is no one on the CBRS spectrum in Lynchburg, so we would be the first. Uh, connectivity is important, obviously, for virtual learning, there's synchronous content delivery, human interaction, virtual field trips, productivity, flexibility. Uh, one thing that I'd like to highlight is equitable expectations, and you all have kind of talked about it tonight. It's very difficult to have an expectation that a, a child will be online, learning, if we can't guarantee that they have a network connection or a computer or device, so, um, this hopefully will address that. Uh, there are a number of other benefits, I won't go into all of them, but, uh, interestingly enough, the CDC now considers, uh, internet access a social determinant of your health, um, which I didn't realize, but I think it's fascinating. Uh, and in addition, uh, it does align with our strategic plan, three, four, four, as well as the City of Lynchburg's blueprint for opportunity objectives, uh, two different sections there, and their comprehensive plan, Chapter Two, Opportunities for Equality Education. So, uh, trying to make sure that we are on target and moving forward. So who's, who's this for? All LCS students, uh, is the goal. Um, however, uh, you do have to put a plan in place to actually offer this. So, um, we've taken a combination of data, survey data, uh, household, uh, economic data, and geographic data, put those together to develop the priority list. So, um, this next slide, I'm gonna talk about the different phases on how we would deploy this, and just know that each of these three things was a key factor in determining, uh, how we were gonna go forward. So, uh, beginning with approval, uh, from the board, um, and, uh, and permitting. Uh, it would take about three months to deploy Phase One, which would be downtown and midtown. Uh, I have a map for those of you who are visual, I'll get to that in a second. Uh, the Phase Two would be Midtown Part Two in the College Park area, so Sheffield, CBBCC, Heritage. Uh, then we would handle West Lynchburg and Northwest Lynchburg, so that would be your Lakeside Drive, Lincoln, uh, areas. And then finally, Boonsboro and Rivermont, so, uh, and recognizing that this is a linear timeline, um, but once we get things going, we could certainly run things in parallel and, uh, hopefully make things much faster so that it wouldn't, uh, actually take eleven months to finish. Uh, so here's the visual, I hope it's, uh, I hope you'll forgive my, my little borders there, that I know that they're not great, my four-year-old could probably do better, but the, um, for the visuals, th- this is where we, we were looking. Um, and you will notice that Phase Two has more students that we would be hoping to address than Phase One, and that's largely because of geography. So, um, there's a little bit bigger cost with Phase Two to get that many students, um, whereas with Phase One, we can get by with two towers. So we take two towers, we put them up, ideally, probably at Dunbar Middle School and one at EC Glass High School. And that would cover the neighborhoods that you see on the map. EC Glass High School, and that would cover the neighborhoods that you see on the map. The sixteen hundred students is specific right now, those numbers are specific to our economically disadvantaged, so you'll notice that that number doesn't add up to the just under eight thousand, but it would ultimately cover all students. Internet access, yes, so while this is providing access to the LCS network, and that is the primary focus of this, internet access would be available, it would be safe, it would be secure, and it would be compliant. Are we cooperating with the city as much as possible? Some of the locations physically that we'd like to get to will require assistance with the city, and they may have other uses for the towers once we get those up and going, so really excited to work with them. They haven't been able to do much from an initiative standpoint, but they may be able to piggyback off of some of our work, so there's actually some legislation that prevents them from offering internet access in, as a municipality, but as the schools, if we're providing private network access, it just happens to have internet, it's a slightly different situation. So what would it cost? Well, CARES money would be upfront, and I believe that's in a separate proposal for you, ongoing, we're looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand a year, the support service contract there at sixty thousand is optional, but that does have a third-party managing any issues that might happen at a student's home. So for this program, students would have a device similar to a hotspot, but it could even be embedded directly in their Chromebook to get online, or it could be like a little modem that we stick on the outside of the house, and this would, that service support contract covers that company going and handling onsite visits and going into people's homes, et cetera. In addition, we'd be looking for one full-time employee to help manage the process, and thirty thousand dollars a year miscellaneous equipment is actually a little bit on the high side, but I did want to include that. And then who else would benefit from this? Well, once we had students up and running, then we could provide it to LCS faculty and staff that live within the City of Lynchburg. We'll have to investigate whether or not we can open it up for families, and that's due to E-Rate, so we do use E-Rate for our internet service, and we don't want to lose that, because that pays for eighty percent of the cost for the internet, and so we would have to look and see if it's something that we could offer for families, but at this time it would only be for students, faculty and staff. So, any questions?
Mr. Collins, you did an outstanding job with that. Boy, any questions? Right? I think we got it. Dr. Ellis?
Questioning on the, I guess the phasing, and what's the resource restrictions, and I understand a linear plan, but once it gets out, I know there'll be a lot of, obviously there'll be a lot of interest, and, you know, when are you coming out my way? And what are the kind of real limitations on us basically trying to do this all at once?
So the first, the first part, we're going to be figuring out some of the details of the system, so that first phase is making sure that we have processes in place, it's getting the equipment, and honestly, the equipment ultimately is the biggest factor, and I've got ninety days on that right now, it all depends on shipping, COVID has affected a lot when it comes to logistics, so especially in electronics right now, so it's possible that we could get everything ordered and have it in by February or January, I really don't know. It's a little bit manpower, we could possibly bring on some additional resources just to help us get it up and running, if we wanted to run in parallel, otherwise we're kind of limited to me and the two or three people on my team who would be working on it, so we can certainly, we can certainly speed that process up if that's what the board wanted us to do.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. I would like to acknowledge that this is reflective of a great bit of work that the administration is working through, and appropriate persons around enrollment facilities and technology, and so that work is going on, and we are appreciative of it. If it would please the board, we would like to take a five-minute recess and reconvene and move through the rest of our agenda. We will rest for five minutes.
The same sort of review of the facility study.
Thank you, pleasure to attend that meeting, very nice. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Finance Chair? All right, H2 Legislative Advocacy Committee has met, and their chair now, Dr. Kim Senha, Dr. Senha.
Yes, we met on August tenth, it was a little bit of an awkward meeting, because we weren't sure if we were meeting, and there was no chair, so nobody was in charge, but luckily people showed up, and I was elected chair for better or worse, because I had the most seniority, which is half a year. So we spent the time just like reacquainting ourselves, which was really good for me, actually, on, you know, what the, what the goals and objectives are of the Legislative Action and Community Relations Committee, and one of our primary tasks is our legislative agenda. Now, we printed copies, but they didn't print so well, but if you look, the attachment's also in your board docs, all the, I reformatted it, my idea is to have a nice handout for our legislators, so I just took all the content from prior, from last year that were our priorities, repackaged it into this with a little preamble about what the committee is and what our charge is. But your assignment, our assignment as a board, is to decide whether or not we want to keep the same priorities, if we want to take some off and add some on, and we really need to finalize that, and the committee can review. We didn't have any recommendations, I only got feedback so far from one person, and so I would really welcome that feedback, and the sooner the better. Our next meeting is September fourteenth, so it's coming right up. We also plan our annual breakfast with the legislators, which last year was Friday, November thirteenth, if we were to do it similarly this year, it would be Friday, November twelfth, which may or may not be problematic, because Veterans Day is the eleventh on a Thursday, and I don't know if a lot of our legislators will be out of the office, and maybe that date won't work, the week after will not work for any of us, because we will be at the VSBA Annual Conference, at least most of us, many of us will, so we could do it a week earlier, or we could push it to early December shortly after Thanksgiving. If we do that, I would recommend a virtual conference, I think we've got much better attendance and participation, it made it very convenient for everybody, and although we haven't voted on it as a committee, my recommendation is going to be that we conduct it similarly to last time, where everybody took a particular priority and presented it in like a three-minute elevator speech with some supporting documents and such, and then leave open time for discussion. So we need to review the priorities, and update, refine, revise, whatever, and then come to some, some agreement on a possible date for our breakfast with the legislators.
All right, Dr. Senha, that's very thorough, so let's have a brief discussion about that. I think that Chair has given us an opportunity to maybe to submit some things to her in preparation for our next meeting, their meeting, and then to us, thoughts, comments on the board at this time. Ms. Morrison?
I really like the idea of pushing it into early December, I think that a lot of things will be over with by then, and some we might have delegates maybe attending themselves. I love, last year we did have representatives from their offices, even more than, and I thought that was very good. I like the idea of each of us taking one and really presenting it with documentation and sharing with other board members, and I think that's, it worked well last year, and I think that would, why not do it again that way? That's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Anyone else would like to comment on this particular matter of Legislative Advocacy System? I attended that meeting, it was a fine meeting, and so...
I believe Mr. Harvey.
Go right ahead, Mr. Harvey.
The only thing I was just going to ask, I submitted comments, so I assume that what you're suggesting is we will come back together as a committee next time.
Yeah, if you could maybe send them to me before the fourteenth, that way I can share them with the committee, and as they come in, I'll try to summarize them, and hopefully, like a day or two before the meeting, I'll present what I've gotten to date from that, so that the committee members can ruminate over those and consider those, and then we'll, we'll edit the list as, as those comments come in, and then we'll present it for review and approval by the full board, I guess at the October sixth meeting, it'll be.
Dr. Coleman, do we have the legislative goals from DSBA yet?
I believe we're going to approve that at the next board meeting, but you'll have them.
Sometimes we've looked at how, aligning what we're doing with getting their support with it.
Well, and that raises a good point, on the twenty-third, I'll be attending the Legislative Advocacy Conference, and so I may, very likely come away with some important information with that, which I will share as I'm able with the full board to consider as part of our legislative priorities moving forward.
Okay, that's very good, and we also sometimes look at what the asset's doing as well to just get some flavor from that. All right, if everybody could work in harmony with what the Chair's suggestion for us to do, and that would make us ready for our October the fifth meeting to have those matters closed out. I do want to add that the newest member of that committee, Attorney Tross, brought up something I thought was really good, Madam Chair, around us eventually getting to the place where board members may go and appear before a committee hearing and argue our case in that regard, and so I like that, that's new and fresh, and thank you, sir, for bringing that to the table. Any further questions for the Chair of the Legislative Advocacy Committee? Thank you, Dr. Senha, well done, well done. All right, for Lower Regional School, Dr. Carter?
The Lower Regional School Board met August the twenty-fifth in-person at ten o'clock at the Lower Regional School Board. The Lower Regional School Board met August the 25th in person at 10 o'clock at the Lower Regional School. And when, in the reorganization plan or meeting, we welcomed Dr. Bergen, who is the superintendent, superintendent in Bedford County Schools. Now he's going to be the superintendent on the Lower Regional Board. And we're also waiting to receive the assessment study. We haven't gotten that yet, but hopefully that will be coming soon. And they've already interviewed a lot of individuals, and so we're waiting for that. And also, we were concerned regarding our vulnerable population with the students there. And so we made adjustments to the student nurses and the practicum students. There right now, we're not having any volunteers at this time because of the activities at the various colleges. And we don't want to single out anyone, so that's going to be for right now. We'll reassess that. And the next meeting is December the 1st, 2021 at 10 o'clock.
Questions for Dr. Carter? Thank you, Dr. Carter. STEM Academy, Dr. Nillis.
Dr. Coleman, you skipped.
I'm so sorry. I really, Dr. Gupta, please go right here.
You skipped the Gov. School, so but I thought I'm not, I was going to speak for an hour, but...
But you know what? Dr. Gupta, Dr. Gupta, please forgive me for skipping that very important committee. And you were so kind not to say something prior to, let me just do this. Dr. Carter, you completed your report?
Yes, and I was, I was wondering. I said, I didn't think I was next, but that's okay.
Well, very good. Well, we're going to go back to Governor's School now. And the Chair of that committee, Dr. Gupta, please go right ahead.
I was going to speak for an hour, but I left. I left all the minutes with, with the Board Clerk and the handouts with the Board Clerk. You're welcome to take them home and read it. If any questions, feel free to call me or email me. The key takeaways from the last meeting were that the tuition has been capped right now for the last five years. But for salary increases, they may need to increase tuition, but not right now. It'll be about three years down the road. And the Gov. School is capped at 150, and we have reached that student body cap of 150 with our increase in six seats from LCS.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. I had an opportunity to attend that meeting as well. A very good, good group of leaders and good representation, Dr. Gupta. Any questions for the Gov. School? All right, thank you so very much. That'll now move us to the STEM Academy. Dr. Nillis.
The STEM Academy met on the 17th. We, it was primarily a director's report going over enrollment. They are fully enrolled, 51 students. They're full up, which is good news for them. Looking forward to starting in-school or in-person classes. Their first, first day of instruction, I believe, was the 28th of August. Discussion about finances looks, looks normal. Nothing unusual there. They did, Ms. Cash did go over the internships that they're looking for. And they have 10 students in mechatronics, four in cybersecurity, seven in health sciences. In one need, they're asking for, so if anybody has any contacts in veterinary or dermatology, anyone willing to support a student for internship in either of those two areas, I encourage you to contact Ms. Susan Cash at the STEM Academy at CBCC. Other than that, things look really optimistic for the, for the start of the year for them.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis. That was, that was good. Any questions for STEM Academy? All right, our Education Foundation, two presenters, Dr. Sen Ha and Mr. Tross.
I don't have a report.
All right, thank you very much. We look forward to our next meeting and hearing from you all. Thank you so much for your service. Partners in Education, Dr. Brennan.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, likewise for you. And Beacon of Hope, Dr. Nillis and Dr. Sen Ha.
No report.
All right, thank you all, likewise. And that now brings us to our Education Task Force. And Dr. Coleman and Dr. Gupta. If I might, I would like to say something in relationship to the Task Force, and then I will yield to anything that Dr. Gupta may want to add, but I'm going to ask Dr. Carter to share something very briefly, and Dr. Edwards, if she chooses to say anything in addition. But in relationship to the Task Force, you know that the Task Force is on hold. We did have a city school board leadership meeting in this very room last week. And present at that meeting was the Mayor, Vice Mayor, our new City Manager and Deputy City Manager, Dr. Carter, myself, Dr. Edwards, and Ms. Laconich. And it was a very good meeting. The agenda included, the agenda was not limited to the Task Force, but the agenda included very insightful information to city leadership around transportation and what we're doing to resolve that, all of the COVID-19 dynamics that needed to be shared. And then we had a conversation about the Task Force. And so tonight, of course, there'll be no action around that, but we are awaiting council to look into the matter. And they will carry a motion in relationship to where the Task Force would go. And we would have that same motion in which we would have an opportunity to vote as well in relationship to where that was going. I shared the sentiments of each of the board members around what I heard from each of you to that group. And so we will wait and see as they want to go first in relationship to the future of the Task Force. Does appear that there is a, a regard for us appreciating the work that Lynchburg City Administration and the schools are doing and the board is doing. And so we will see what's happening with that. And so maybe October, no later than November, we'll be able to have something that we can vote on. Do want to remind the board that ultimately the state constitution and code gives the authority relating to schools to the Lynchburg City School Board. Dr. Carter.
Well, I was glad to have one takeaway, a lot of takeaways, but one takeaway I was really proud of was, was the fact that we were able to just let the leaders of the city council aware on the City Manager and Assistant Manager know that we are also very intentional with the funds that we've received and how we are started the facility study. And we have found a way to do that with the operation budget, you know, shifting things that we can to the CARES funds and now freeing up funds to do that through the operation budget. That we are taking on that initiative ourselves. So that takes that off of the CIP budget for the city. So it puts, we're, we're funding that. So that was good. And also just the, just the fact of knowing that we do value the input that people in the city, how they helped on the committee, and that we will use that when we get that assessment and the results from that. So all of that to help support us to make sure we're doing what is needed for city stu, students.
Dr. Gupta, would you like to?
I don't have any additional information.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Edwards.
Just want to clarify a little bit. It was in our operating budget, and we met with city administrators and flipped some stuff out of our, out of our CIP budget so that they could take it in their CIP budget, just to clear the record. We don't want the city folks to feel like we didn't acknowledge them. I do want to say the city schools' leadership meetings were something that we held pre-COVID. And they've always included the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair, Vice Chair, myself, and the City Manager. Sometimes the deputies come depending upon the topic or the CFOs depending upon the topic. So this was our first one to get back to having those leadership meetings about multiple things for which both governing bodies have a vested interest in. So I didn't want anyone to think that we were meeting solely for the Task Force. As Dr. Coleman said, we have other agenda items and we have other meetings planned for future. That being said, there's also a city schools admin team meeting, which is one level below that level, which is the CFO, the deputy, myself, and our Senior Director for Finance and Operations, along with the City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, their CFO, and their facilities person as well. And we meet periodically to discuss joint projects, CIP, and mutual interest of things. And we had those scheduled as well prior to COVID, so we just started meeting again. We have one coming up relatively soon to discuss mutual interests. But I just wanted to let the board know that there is a level of collaboration between the two groups. And as John pointed out, Mr. Collins pointed out when he did his short presentation, you could see where our strategic plan goes overlap with some of the city goals as well. And you'll see that throughout our strategic plan, and that's due to our mutual collaboration.
So the school board has done everything that we were supposed to do when the charter was voted on. The first time, we voted on our part and said yes around what you saw in the comprehensive strategic plan. That came to us and we voted in agreement with that. And so it's, it's now something that is resting with council to do the kind of things that they need to do in relationship to the Task Force. And we are moving forward triumphantly with our facility studies, demographic studies, and look forward to coming back to this board at a later point in relationship to how the Task Force will be used to help us going forward. Any questions regarding the Education Task Force? Mr. Harvey.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the funding, just, just a clarification, is, is LCS is funding the facilities analysis? LCS is not funding the full work of the Task Force, correct?
That's correct. And in a way, Dr. Edwards, you wanted to speak of that. We did end up having some money to go.
Yes, we did. That, your statement is correct as I understood it. And the work that we're doing with our facility study as it relates to CIP, well, you'll see some shift in funding either over there or certain projects might end up in CARES depending upon what's related and can be appropriated. But as far as the Task Force in its original formation, it was not to be funded by LCS. That was never the plan, although we did have some funds taken from our fund balance a couple of years ago that were diverted towards Task Force, Task Force plans, I guess. And then also some funds were diverted towards the City Manager's account to use for Task Force implementation.
Okay. So, so then my second question would be, is there a sense that city council will reappropriate those funds for the Task Force to do its work?
That's a good question, Mr. Harvey, and I'm not prepared to answer that tonight because we just don't, don't know.
Okay. And then the last point that I'd like to make, if, if you don't mind, is simply, not really a question, but more of a comment. As I hear, a lot of the leadership in these discussions, it's somewhat of a tight circle. One of the things I was really impressed with the Task Force when we reviewed and approved the charter is it's such a diverse group of folks from all different aspects of our city. You know, lots of, lots of experts that are involved with that Task Force. I just want to make sure that we are not losing sight of the extent of the resources that we have at our disposal with this Task Force. So that if we're entertaining the idea of paring this down, I would like for us to reconsider that as a board because I think we have quite a, quite a team assembled here. And to my knowledge, we have not received their initial reports back to this board from their initial work that they did prior to COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I have to reiterate what Dr. Carter said a little bit ago. We, we really appreciate every person who's been involved in that process, even on our board. Ms. Morrison, Dr. Gupta, phenomenal job in, in being a part of helping to get this going and moving. And again, at this point, we're just at a point of waiting to see how council, they requested to be able to go first in terms of looking at some things. And then we will follow that up with a vote here on our side. Okay? Any further questions on that matter? Thank you so much, everyone. We will now move into Section I, if I'm correct, for unfinished business. And we will deal with Item 1, LCS Community Update. Dr. Edwards.
Sure, there are a couple of things in the community update, the first of which is COVID. So I will do, I will start, and then as always, I welcome Dr. Sen Ha's comments as she is a good LCS statistician about what's going on in the city. But what I did post publicly for the public to understand how we make decisions regarding COVID in schools, COVID in cities. And we will be updating our website within the next couple of days. That will show our mitigation measures for COVID color-coded from, I think, blue to red, blue being great and red being not so great, but also our instructional delivery coded similar. So if you recall last year, when the city was in the red in COVID, we were still having in-person instruction even though we were in the red. So the, the metrics may be a little different. There are seven things that we typically look at in terms of just, this is just COVID. Many of them can be found on the VDH website. You can see the city 14-day average, seven-day average of new COVID cases, and the seven-day average of, of new COVID cases in general and per hundred thousand. I've put numbers that are our guidelines. They are not hard and fast because they, obviously, we have to look at all circumstances. But for us to remain in-person learning in our schools, whether that's a classroom or a wing or a whole entire school or the division, from the city, what we're looking at is trying to stay under 200 cases per hundred thousand, under 30 cases per hundred thousand in our seven-day average, and, and an under 10 cases in just a seven-day average in general. And then we also have LCS metrics which are on our website. They are a little delayed in that what you see on today will probably represent what happened as of noon yesterday. And I do want the board to understand that our COVID response team, the people who keep up with all the metrics are the same people who do the contact tracing. They're also the same people who do the threat assessment. They are the same people who handle the bullying. They are the same people who handle all the behavior. They run nursing services and guidance services. So if it's not as populated as quickly as you would like, part of that may be because COVID contact tracing phone calls go well past 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night. And we, we can only use the data that we have confirmed at that time. And I will tell you, right before coming into this meeting, I was talking with the building principal who said, "I'm not done with all of my calls right now. I still have more people to call." And I just said, "Call me later tonight and let me know where you are in terms of calls." But our LCS metrics, we try to keep our COVID cases below a five-day case average. You can see that's ticking up in the last couple, couple of days since we've opened school. We also try to look at student and staff absenteeism and keep the positive and quarantine rates less than 30%. And again, when we shifted LES to, to remote learning, we were above the 30% with students and at about 24% plus some unfilled positions, which tipped us over to 30% for staff for those two days. And with the difficulty in finding subs, it was difficult to get additional subs. We already had subs covering for some positions that were open, and we needed additional subs to cover for the quarantine folks. So this is what we look at daily, if anybody is interested in how we make those decisions. And we do it case by case, building by building, department by department, principal by principal. And it's a team effort in terms of doing that. So just wanted to update everybody on those metrics. Any questions? And then as always, I love to hear what Dr. Sen Ha.
Dr. Brennan have a question?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Brennan.
Just to comment on these, so as you look at that list, most of these things are things that Lynchburg City Schools doesn't have control over, right? They're community-oriented phenomenon that just, we need the community to be aware of, that we really don't have much control over this. And, and these are sort of numbers for, for our information, but except for the absenteeism, really those other numbers don't necessitate that we close. but except for the absenteeism, really, those other numbers don't necessitate that we close.
Correct. Unless we deem that those cases, let's just say our 5-day average happens to be 5 cases in the same classroom that was in-school spread, it may deem that we close that classroom, not close, but shift to remote learning for that classroom or areas that if we had cross-classroom spread.
Right. And Dr. Edwards, just to emphasize what you said before, the other difference is that the decision is with the Central Virginia Health Department as far as their approval of what gets done also. So even though we have these numbers, so issues that have come up with families who have said, "Well, I'm aware of a situation in school that I think was community transmission," that has been brought to Central Virginia Public Health. They have said, "We have looked at those incidents, and we do not think that's necessary to close." So we have their input, and you need to have that as we go along.
Yeah. Every case that we have is directly reported to the VDH. And we have a case manager that's assigned to us. All of the school divisions now have a specific case manager that's assigned to the schools for the purpose of helping determine whether or not we have in-school spread.
And just one final comment, Mr. Chairman. Is it okay? It's just that the amount of work that's going into this, as you have pointed out, is phenomenal. As we look at surrounding counties that are having so much difficulty with closing their schools and closing different grades, that I know that this board certainly appreciates the work that's gone into keeping children in the school and trying to track this. So thank you all so much for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. And Dr. Senha?
Well, thank you for the compliments. I don't think they're deserved because I mostly cut and paste from external things, and today I was a little rushed. VDH keeps changing what they do, and so it's really messed with consistency in what I've tried to do, so you can do comparisons prior presentation. But we've gone from bad to worse. So 2 weeks ago, we were at very high, and now we are at severe risk level. Our vaccination rate is ticking up, which is a little bit of a silver lining. Our transmission level puts us at very high. So again, this is all community spread. I haven't been able to find the school division-level data. There's links to it, but nothing comes up, so I'm not sure what the deal is there. And then our trends, positivity rate is on the downswing for us, but it's still very high. Cases per 100,000 are climbing, and our hospitalization rate per 100,000. Now, that chart I could only get for Lynchburg City, not at the other localities, and I think it's because they all come to Lynchburg. I'm not sure. And there's a lag in that, so that's not a... It shows you a dangerous trend, so... And of course, Centra has been out with several press conferences regarding their capacity and such. The good news is that there's some indication that Delta might be burning out as it has done in areas that are well ahead of us, India, Great Britain, and such. And we can hope that that will happen here. It's not started yet, but hopefully, there is an end in sight. And again, I would encourage everybody who is not vaccinated to get the vaccination. The incidence of breakthrough infections is very small. The hospitalization rate is quite low for those who do have breakthrough infections among the vaccinated, and the death rate is extremely low. So vaccines work. And the sooner we can contain community spread, the sooner our schools will be safer, the sooner we can get past this COVID. I'd like nothing more than for this pandemic to be done. I had really hoped this summer that it was, and I find it quite depressing that it's not. I find it quite depressing that Lynchburg area vaccination rates are equivalent to some of the lowest in the country. So a lot of work to do in the community, but we're doing the best we can, and the schools will continue to mitigate as best we can. I am grateful to the team that does the contact tracing. I know how difficult that can be to make all those calls and try to reach people. And I know how concerned others in the community are for the data, and I know y'all are doing the best you can. And getting the contacts reached is far more important than, I guess, the summary stats. But we'll get there. And kudos for mitigating, keeping in-school outbreaks from happening, because they are at other schools.
All right. Any questions for, I see, Mr. Harvey and then Ms. Morrison?
Yeah, this might be a question for either Dr. Senha or Dr. Brennan. Would my understanding be correct that the reason why the city of Lynchburg has such a high vulnerability level is because we have one of the highest infection rates, but also the lowest vaccination rate? Is that what determines the vulnerability level, or are there other factors in that chart?
That's a good question.
Because this chart shows us is very high. Campbell County is low, Amherst is medium, and Bedford is medium. But those are the 2 numbers. It looks like we have the highest infection rate and the lowest vaccinated rate, which will lead me to believe that's what establishes the vulnerability level. But I just...
According to the measure here, it's a combination of population density. So being a city, we are much more dense than the surrounding counties.
Okay.
Crowded living and working areas, which we have more of, percentage of minorities and non-English speakers, which tend to be more vulnerable, mostly because they don't, they're not in jobs where they can Zoom to work or whatever, health system challenges, unemployment and low income, housing and transport challenges, and other age and health issues.
So some of that is what I would equate as an urban versus a rural?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And it's one of those things I kept emphasizing last year is that it's hard to compare when it comes to COVID. We don't really compare with surrounding counties because we are urban. We have more high-risk populations with respect to the disease, which are poverty, people of color, multi-generation households and such. So basically, you're urban versus rural.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morrison?
Go ahead. Let Dr. Brennan.
Oh, Dr. Brennan, please.
I think that's very appropriate. I do think that the infectivity rate is very closely related to vaccination. If you look at areas of the country that are unvaccinated, those are the highest rates. And if you look at areas like Alabama, their cities are actually not at higher rate as their rural areas because of the vaccination incident. So I think those are all true, but it really does tie very closely to vaccinated individuals. I mean, talking about, you know, 1% or 2% of people who are vaccinated being hospitalized and/or dying compared to 98% of people who are unvaccinated.
Correct.
Ms. Morrison?
My question, the colleges and universities in Lynchburg, are there positive cases included in our city numbers?
Yes.
I believe there would be, yeah.
I just... Which we have, and rural areas wouldn't have large numbers of students.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes, I have one question for clarification. The number of people who are quarantined on LCS, the website is always, it's not always, but unfortunately, is a fairly high number. Does that relate to whether they're vaccinated or not? If a staff member, for example, is vaccinated, are they quarantined differently? Or who are all those people who are being quarantined?
I'm so glad Ms. Brown is in here, too, to make sure that I do not mess this up. But staff who are vaccinated and are not showing symptoms do not have to quarantine.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Correct.
We are still encouraging folks to get tested because you could not be showing symptoms and still be a spreader, that we don't know that. But Ms. Brown is far more an expert. As a matter of fact, I have renamed her to be Dr. Brown because of the amount of time she's spent learning all of this to go over our quarantine and mitigation strategies.
Yes. So the staff that are fully vaccinated, and we do not quarantine, are not in the count. So they would not be in the count at all. So the staff that are having symptoms, and we do end up quarantining due to medical advice or what have you, we will put them in that count.
So are the majority of people who are then quarantined are individuals who are not vaccinated, who have been exposed?
Yes. Yes.
Staff and students?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
I'm glad you asked that, Dr. Brennan, because that was a question I had to ask. Because a lot of people are saying that, I heard a lot, that the teacher, she was fully or persons fully vaccinated, but they were able to stay although they weren't quarantined. So I explained from what I've heard here that that was the case. So now, what if a person is, a teacher or employee is partially vaccinated?
They would be quarantined.
You have to be fully vaccinated in 2 weeks out in order not to be quarantined.
And people are concerned because now there's not the, there was a relief or where they were able to use other... So would...
We actually had a conversation, the initial conversation about that. So let me go back to way back when. Remember when the federal government had the FF-CRA leave, which allowed people up to 10 days of paid COVID leave? And that ended in December of 2020. We at LCS continued it at the LCS dime up until June 30th of 2021. So we carried it for an additional 6 months. We did not require, you know, if you were quarantined or tested positive for COVID, we had up to the 10 days paid leave beyond what the feds did. Then we had that wonderful period in June. I think some of us even took our mask off if you were vaccinated indoors for about 2 weeks. I think it lasted. And then the Delta variant hit. So at that time in June, and we had been telling our folks since March that this was going to go away, especially since by June, we had offered multiple clinics, thank you, Dr. Brown and, Dr. C., Dr. Brown and team, multiple clinics to have our staff vaccinated. So we dropped it as of June 30th, as did many other areas. And now, amongst my colleagues and all, we are all talking about, okay, here we are again, and we're seeing staff that are having to be quarantined and be out and having to use their sick days. So as of this morning, that was a conversation that we discussed amongst senior leadership to revisit, and we'll be making a recommendation about changing that to a more appropriate response, given the Delta variant and what's happening in our schools right now.
Right. Thank you. Any further, Dr. Senha?
This is a question for Dr. Brennan, our epidemiologist. A lot of stuff I've been seeing is that children are more vulnerable to this Delta variant than they were to the original COVID. The likelihood of a child getting sick from COVID in the early months of the pandemic was really small. Delta seems to have changed that. Plus, children under 12 don't have access to vaccine. And I have, I did look at some age statistics, but I couldn't refine it enough to get it ready for today, where there is a much, there's an increase in the percentage of new cases that are among people 19 and younger. Can you comment on that, what you have seen and the extent to which it's still very rare?
Right.
Or is it something that we really should be concerned about?
I would say, number 1, I think it's still not totally clear whether the Delta variant is more transmittable to children or because the numbers are higher, that it seems to be, there are more children, but there clearly are more children being hospitalized than there were. And the number you're referring to is actually one that I've seen, too, which is that previously, pre-Delta, about 15% of all cases in the United States were 19 years or less, and now it's about 22%. So it's increased in that age group. The good news is they still do not appear to get very sick from it. It's still very unusual for a child to be hospitalized. We all know there are children hospitalized, you know, people, children in ICU, but it still is, numbers-wise, is a very unusual phenomenon. So they're debating about whether it's children more susceptible. They're still saying that children seem to handle it better than adults do. If that helps.
That's somewhat reassuring, because I know we see alarming statistics like Arkansas Children's Hospital, but they only have, I think, one children's hospital in the whole state, unlike Virginia, which has many more.
Clearly, there are children who are very sick from it. But fortunately, in the big picture, as far as the numbers go, it's a fairly small percentage.
All right. Dr. Carter, and if we could begin to wrap up this portion of the meeting?
This is for Dr. Edwards. So you just finished stating that you all were going to revisit being able to see if there's some type of assistance or support? So currently now, what do new employees do if they're fresh starting this year? And do they go into a negative, or...?
No. We've tried to work, if they don't have a buildup of a sick leave bank or a bank, we've been trying to work with them. Hopefully, we haven't had that many. I mean, and this recent uptick in quarantine is just starting since we've brought kids back in our schools. And that's the reason for looking at it and revisiting and getting some accurate numbers before we make final decisions about how to do it.
All right. Anything else for the community update? All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move to I-3?
Oh, wait. I'm sorry.
Oh, you still have something?
Yeah, there's other stuff.
I-2, actually. I-2, I'm gonna go to one.
Yeah. There's more on the community update. COVID was the first thing. The second thing was transportation. Don't want to miss that. So we made the big announcement, hiring a transportation director has been great to have that person start on October 4th, as well as many changes that we've made in transportation. And I just want to say once again, thank you to everyone who has been out at transportation, working side by side with our transportation staff. And thanks to our transportation staff for Friday. We did have a high absenteeism in transportation, and they stepped up and helped mitigate and rearrange buses. And yes, we did have some buses have to do multiple runs and were a little bit late. But I'm grateful that we did not have to close school with the high numbers of absent drivers that we had on Friday. And that really is due to the dedication of the existing folks who were there, problem-solving, and helping out. So as I said, our mission, trying to keep schools open 5 days a week to the best of our ability. We have mitigated most of our technology challenges. And again, thank you to the team that worked tirelessly on that, as well as the Edulog folks who came down to help. And to some, to parents, if you still have concerns, most of them have been emailing us if it was a stop that is across a dangerous street or perhaps on the same side, but there's no sidewalk, making it also dangerous if it's high traffic on that street. Parents have been great, families have been great about notifying us with that as well. So as Carl said, it wasn't one of the best starts of our school year, having our transportation the way it was on the first day of school. But we have recovered and moved on and continue to still want to hire anyone who wants to be a bus driver. We are still looking for bus drivers to fill our positions, as well as moving forward and making sure that we look at ways to reduce the amount of times kids are spending on buses, particularly as we get into the winter, where it's dark in the morning and dark in the afternoon. Anything else, Ms. Pugh or Ms. Laconage, that I missed, Mr. Gatski? Also on there, in the middle of all of this, we had some SOL scores that were released. You heard someone talk about the SOL scores, and it was actually something that all of us superintendents have discussed. I can't think of very many school districts that look exactly like they looked pre-COVID. And if they do, I'm so curious as to how they were able to manage, maintain... And if they do, I'm so curious as to how they were able to manage, maintaining high scores in the middle of what we all went through last year. And I'm grateful to my colleagues for all of the support that they've given us, each other during this time, and we all recognize that we have a road ahead of us in terms of mitigating learning loss, and for us particularly in math, as well as some of my colleagues similar, moving forward. So, you know, that being said, what are we doing now is probably the better question in terms of how are we going to move forward? What are the changes in the SOL? I had previously sent information to you all about iXL. I think there was a question about the Virtual Academy. They also are using it. We are looking at diagnostic data on all of our, in all of our schools, on all of our students, particularly in the area of reading and our literacy and math. And I believe Ms. Pugh and Dr. Jordan are going to talk a little bit more about the future of SOLs and what we're doing to mitigate some of the learning loss that we and others in the state of Virginia have experienced.
Good evening, are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes.
As we've said a few times, 2019 was the last complete data set that we have. 2021 SOL data, we saw a little more than 4,000 fewer SOL tests. We are closely watching our iXL diagnostic information every single day. We are currently up to about 80% of our students in grades two through 12 have updated diagnostics in English. And about 80% have updated diagnostic information in math from grades two to algebra one. We will use this information in addition to our spring SOL data, any summer data, if we have it from our summer programs on individual students, as well as new growth measure data that will come in for students in grades three through eight. This is a new type of SOL administration that Dr. Edwards just mentioned. So we will use a combination of data points, both locally and some statewide data. The new growth measures, Bass is the only school that has completed those. Everyone else will take the math and reading growth measures in the month of September. Many schools are starting this week. We get immediate information back by grade level, by cohorts, and individual students. So this is very, very useful data. Again, this is the first administration of this new SOL growth measure, and it is a pre-test, post-test model this year. Next school year will be the first full implementation, and it will be a pre-test, a midpoint assessment, and a post-test. We are excited to be able to use this information in conjunction with our local data. We are working hard to address the gaps that we are seeing in individual student learning. We've seen a great deal of math regression. It is shocking to see the level of math regression. We heard many national experts say that we would see about eight to nine months of math regression through the pandemic, and we are definitely seeing math regression, especially at the upper elementary through middle school grades. Teachers are working really hard in their professional learning communities to collaboratively address student gaps, looking at what information was covered last year when we were all virtual in LCS and making sure that they spiral back to these topics, these standards again this year. We're really focusing on the quality of tier one instruction, so the instruction that every student receives in the classroom. You've heard me talk a lot about the pre-K five literacy program that every student in LCS elementary schools is participating in. We are focusing as well on math scores, math skills that students may have missed, hands-on math activities. I've been in quite a few elementary classrooms over the last few weeks, and many teachers are focusing on getting manipulatives into the hands of students. So we're seeing students working with hands-on math, STEM activities. We are seeing a real focus on foundational skills that they may have missed in lower grades, making sure that they understand the scaffolding that's necessary and the level of math that they're in right now. Our schools are working hard to implement before-school, during-school opportunities, and even after-school tutoring for students. We want to do on-time, just-in-time interventions instead of waiting until we receive data at the end of the year to say that a student did not do well on a state assessment. Dr. Edwards has talked quite a bit this year about operationalizing our data. We have this baseline information, and we need to make sure that we are immediately acting on it. So it would be as if a doctor takes different types of vital signs on a patient and realizes that something may be wrong. So we want to intervene quickly and make sure that students get back on track. We are measuring mastery, we're measuring proficiency, we're really honing in on the skills that students absolutely have to have in order to be successful in the next grade levels, and especially math and in English. We are forming relationships and focusing on social and emotional learning this year. It's very, very important to realize that we teach kids, we teach content, but we absolutely teach students. So making sure that those great relationships are built along the way.
Dr. Edwards, anything else?
I think that's back into the question.
All right, Dr. Senha.
That's all very good, and I wish you great success. I know it's quite a lot to, to make up for in terms of lost time and lost opportunity. And I know myself, math is one of those things, use it or lose it. I can pick up a book after not reading for a long time and still be able to read quite well. You just don't lose that much. But math, even just the basics, I forget, you know, and you just have to relearn it. So, but my question is, I of, I from time to time get queries from people I know in the community and through my church. A lot of them are retired engineers, retired faculty from our colleges in the community of wanting to tutor and tutoring opportunities, particularly now because we've talked a lot about the challenges we face and, and we, and. So are there opportunities? Would that be something to do through the volunteer policy? Are there ways to link kids who are really struggling with a tutor from the community? How can the community get involved in helping our students?
I think this would be a great, I wish I could see Amy Pugh's face. I think this would be a great thing for us to talk about with our school counseling partnerships as well. So we've got lots of school counselors focusing on helping students with specific needs. So I definitely think that this could be something that we could do, Dr. Senha. So send them my way, Amy Pugh's way, and we'll make sure that we connect them with a student in need, especially in a virtual environment right now.
It would need to be, with our community members, the tutoring would need to be in a virtual environment. So we would work with the family, you know, who has a student in need and maybe a, a community member who has a strength in something, and then work with the family to say, what time is convenient for you? And find a tutor where that's convenient, so that it doesn't have to always be at, you know, 7:30 in the morning or 4:30 in the afternoon. Perhaps it's on a Saturday when it's convenient for the student and the family, and we can find a tutor that matches that, or on a Wednesday evening, you know, at, at 6:30 or something like that. So please just, you know, send them, you know, you can send them to me, send them to Dr. Jordan, send them to Ms. Reeves, and we will certainly make sure that they are hooked up with students that, that need that support.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, any other pertinent questions for tonight regarding this? All right, I want to thank Dr. Edwards. I do call the board's attention. I think I sent something out on August the 27th from Virginia School Board Association around students in schools in challenging environments. And it, 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 it's very revealing. And I, I would like to just suggest that persons who are looking at the data here locally would also recognize the extreme importance of getting involved in helping us to resolve these challenges. And we certainly are looking forward to you doing that. All right, any further questions that we have? All right, we will now move to I two, governance policies, second review. And this is for action tonight, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so these are the policies that we vetted at our last, I believe, work session. We went through these, many of them are pronoun changes, and I went through each one to talk about what the changes are. So I'll take any additional questions if there are any.
Dr. Brennan?
So I do not want to drag this topic out, and I appreciate the, the length of meeting. I also appreciate the fact of our conversation about dealing with transportation and COVID and all these other important issues. But I want to take this one opportunity to talk about policy B, C, F, Z, which is advisory committees to the school board. You know, I think as Dr. Senia was just saying, and Dr. Coleman always says, we always want community involvement in our schools, and the advisory committees are a good way to do that. And I'd like to, I, I appreciate the, what we think the expectations of the board are and the administration for these advisory committees to get our community involved, involved in them. For example, currently, we don't have a list of meetings for this current academic year on the website for any advisory committee meetings, or from last year and none for this year. We, I guess, traditionally do not have agendas or minutes from the meetings that have occurred previously to allow the community to know what's been discussed at those meetings and, and what were the topics to see if they might be interested in those meetings. And then finally, as part of our policy, there's an annual report from each group that should come to the board, and I wonder whether we shouldn't have that as a set date for our committee that on every quarter, we have one of these advisory committees reporting to us to accomplish that, because I don't think that has been a regular process for us. So I'd love for us to sort of raise these up a little bit as far as recognizing that there are community members who are participating in them and, and, and allowing them to know what is going on with the committees and us giving the support that they need to make sure that they're effective.
Dr. Edwards, you'd like to respond to that?
Certainly, before COVID, lots of things were different before COVID. We, in our board agenda, would post all the meeting dates. So we are going to get back to that, and that was simultaneously when we were taking on board docs. One of the things that we talked about, and this is really at the board's discretion, how you want to have, have this happen, we have shifted our regular meetings, our work session meetings. This year, we've done a better job of shifting our finance committee meetings and our LACRA meetings to the same process where if the meeting's on a Tuesday, then Thursday, before the Tuesday, we finalize the agenda and everything, and it's all on board docs. So it's a one-stop shopping where everybody can go, that's where they get the information. We have not done that with the individual advisory committees, but we certainly can do that with the individual advisory committees and have their agendas, as well as their summary minutes available on board docs in a similar fashion as we do the finance committee and LACRA. Now, they don't vote and do all of that, so it's, it's a little bit more informal in terms of the committee reviewing the minutes. But that was one suggestion that was discussed in our meeting, if, if the board is interested in something like that.
All right, thank you.
Oh, yes, Director Reeves, thank you. I didn't know if you were still there.
Still here. Good evening, board members. One of the things that you will see before the end of the week is something that we did pre-COVID, and that is to send out what I'll call an "all-call" to see if we can really foster some more interest in our advisory committees. For those who've already submitted their list of names to you and you've approved them, we've had a practice of still allowing people who are interested in the conversations and giving feedback to still participate. And the directors over the departments who facilitate those meetings are aware of that. So you will see us go back to doing a more concerted effort of fostering some community engagement through reaching out to our, our newspaper. We're going to do a, a press release, as well as have information on social media and our website.
All right, thank you, Director Reeves, for sharing that. And I, I certainly, just trying to make a theme throughout tonight, is that we need the community. And similar, Dr. Edwards, to how we're dealing with transportation, the persons who are involved in those very committees, as I know they have been in the past, really have an opportunity to share their thoughts and can add some input in how the meeting is put together and really getting real, honest thoughts and reflections about what needs to happen, because we need our community. Any further questions that, Mr. Harvey, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to comment, I serve on the general CTE advisory committee, and I think, you know, Brad has come before the board, presented sort of a summary of our meetings, what takes place. I know we have one coming up mid-October. So, you know, if you would be interested in attending that meeting, I, we're still wondering, you know, whether it's going to be virtual or in-person because of everything going on, but certainly if it's virtual, it'd be really easy to, to get you involved, but just to see what kind of happens at those meetings. But I know that the staff usually comes with a pretty hefty agenda. We're looking at a lot of Perkins funding specifically for Career Tech, but he does come to the board, board and, and give a report and has in the past, so.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I, I forgot to mention that in the part, part two of your question. Dr. Brennan, whether or not they do reports, we just had, I think the last group that was here was School Health Advisory, and they took us through an extensive report on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Prior to that, we also had, as Mr. Harvey said, you know, Dr. Brad comes and does an update from CTE, and we had the Special Ed Advisory Committee come. I think the Equity Task Force the year before came and did their presentation on the volunteer policy. Part of the challenge has been with COVID, of course, just trying to meet and, and have virtual versus in-person and having actual recommendations. And I do believe that the Equity Task Force this past year did not have a formal setup for recommendations, but it's not like the Equity Task Force not to. They were the ones who were very instrumental in a lot of the work that we did on the volunteer policy. So we tend to have those updates at the end of the year, only because if you make it quarterly, and I'm in October, my committee may not have anything that we've done this current school year that's worth sharing and reporting with the board at that time. So typically, what we've done is save room in our May and June work sessions for those groups to do their presentations. I mean, we can continue that unless.
Dr. Brennan?
I just wanted to clarify about that, because I think Dr. Edwards is asking the board, do we want to have the, the minutes and the agenda as, as part of the process on board docs? I think they would like some direction on that.
I want every board member to be informed, that's the whole point of it, to get the people involved. We know what's going on, and it can help us as we're making policy decisions. And so if it's not cumbersome, difficult, I don't see why not.
Board docs available to the public also, right?
Yeah, I have them on board docs.
Right, right.
All right, very good, and, and we'll come back to this later around some of the composition of some of these groups and, and, and maybe reimagining their work. But is there emotion now to approve the updates to the policies so stated in I two in, in board? But is there a motion now to, uh, approve the updates to the policies so stated in I two, uh, in, in board docs?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy.
All right, then moved by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will approve, um, I two and the appropriate policies that are listed for our second review. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing not, uh, we will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you so much. That now moves us to I three, and I do know that the board is beginning to tire. We will do the best we can not just to streamline these to the what's most pertinent, please, for I three.
Absolutely, and I'm going to just turn it over to Ms. Pew, because this is the one she we've been. Thank you, um, these we brought to the last meeting, uh, for your first reading. This is second reading. Uh, the majority of them in the VSB update, updates were just language changes. Some of them in the administering medications were changes due to some of the changes in, um, some legislation that begins in January. The LCS review on textbook selection, adoption, and purchase. Um, we were recommending, um, the change in language from, um, the s- school board, um, in approving and reviewing and selecting textbooks. The school board, uh, does all these processes and, and changing that to superintendent or superintendents designate to match our practice. The one question that, um, Dr. Brennan had asked was, you know, about the school board having final approval. And while that is our practice, it wasn't explicitly stated in the policy. So last week, I sent a revised policy, um, to Dr. Coleman to share with you all to add the statement, "The Lynchburg City School Board approves the selection and purchase of textbooks." So there is no question that you have the final approval.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions for Deputy Superintendent Pew? Is there a motion?
I move the, the school board approve the updates to the policies presented.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Been moved by Dr. Carter, is it second? Second by Ms. Morrison, that we would approve I three and the appropriate policies listed in that item. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Scoop up a moment, Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, same now with I four, Dr. Edwards?
Yep, and these were policies previously reviewed by Director Brown and Director Jordan, who are both here in person and virtually. And I'll turn it over to Director Brown and any questions the board may have.
Afternoon, Board. Um, I apologize, we had brought these, um, policies before you on June twenty-third for the first reading, and I omitted them for the, um, last review, so they're back again. The biggest change, um, that they had was with school board policy IA. Um, and in it, we, um, excuse me, VSBA edited the language. Um, parents of each student who receives reading intervention services are notified before the services begin, and that's a response to intervention. Um, also in addition was the school year, um, and school day and given language for remote learning. Um, and the approval for us to have a remote learning day on a unscheduled, um, day. Other than that, it was basic, um, word changes and adoptions to the new verbiage, um, per VSBA.
All right, thank you, Director Brown. And, uh, any further questions, uh, Dr. Nellis?
Yeah, could you, uh, or someone comment on Policy IHA, which is grouping for instruction, that's, I guess, being deleted? And is there really any impact on curriculum and how, you know, classrooms are structured?
Dr. Jordan, you want to take that one, or you want me to?
She's there, she's there.
I'll take that one. The VSBA was deleting this policy, Dr. Nellis, and it seems to me that IHA is a best practice now. So I do not think that it will impact anything that we are doing. It's more just understood.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions? Yeah, mo- uh, Mr. Harvey?
I'm sorry, um, regarding Policy ICID, can you, can you clarify that, um, the one section regarding the weather conditions, um, for me? I guess what I'm just trying to understand, if we close schools due to adverse weather, we're simply stating that virtual school would close as well? Or are we saying that they could remain open? Or are we saying that we could require students to attend virtually on bad weather days?
Yes, the last part, yes. So this is an option that, um, uh, the VDOE has now given us to have ten, um, remote learning days due to inclement weather, which we, in the past, pre-COVID, we were not allowed to do that, to have the days be, um, remote learning days. Um, and I think this is one of the learning things that we learned from COVID, that it is possible to do that. So, um, and we have an LCS, there's a little diagram that we actually worked on today for upcoming weather that talks about how we make decisions on whether or not school would be closed, school would be completely closed for a snow day, snow day, school would be closed, but it's a remote learning day, a delayed opening, or early dismissal based on weather calls. And we'll, we will be getting it out to the community and the public shortly. It was on our, actually, one of the things we reviewed today. We usually do it in the fall, so we're ready for the future. But we do, we are allowed to, um, any unscheduled, I'm sorry, any inclement we- weather day that we close. We, and it's based on the school, so, um, you can, e- your totals are counted. Like we just shifted LES, these two remote learning days, when we shifted LES.
Okay, so, I, I'm playing devil's advocate here. It's a Friday afternoon, I leave, I stick my books in my Chromebook in my locker, go home. It snows Sunday night, we cancel school on Monday and say it's going to remote learning. Does that student then fall behind because their computer is in their locker at home? Because they weren't prepared for?
The way that we did it last year is when we kind of knew that we might have snow or ice that may close school. One of the things we did is make that announcement to staff as well, because staff members could leave their laptop at work and not be able to get back and get it. So if we know, like, hey, it's predicted, we're going to get eight feet of snow, everybody take your stuff home. Um, and then, of course, we also have to consider power outages. So we could all be home and then half the town doesn't have power. So all of those things are considered. But if we know, particularly when it's going to be like an inch of ice in the morning that might and won't melt by the time we need to get to school, we try to let folks know ahead of time, please take whatever you need to successfully do remote learning, um, at home. Um, and for our staff, if it's safe to come in at a later time, for the staff to come in so that they can work with the LCS, um, wireless, um, access, we will do that too.
Okay, so there are protocols in place?
Yes.
For this, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Further questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the updates to the instruction and program policies as presented.
Is it second?
Well, second?
Seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we would approve the updates to the policies presented in I four. Any further questions or discussion? If not, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up a moment, Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you. That now moves us to J one. And I would like, uh, someone to just give a, a statement of acclimation or approval. Uh, Virginia School Board Association often looks, uh, for what is called a media honor roll of, uh, local, uh, media personalities that are able to call the attention to the community of educational endeavors and needs in a fair and balanced way. And, um, our news and advance reporter, Ms. Jamie Cross, is, um, coming before the school board. Uh, uh, we are bringing her to the attention of VSBA. And, uh, we just like, uh, someone to just lead us in an approval of that, that her name will be added to the Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll.
I may have moved.
Been moved by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Uh, any further questions and discussion on the motion? All right, uh, if you could please, um, call the roll.
Scoop up a moment, Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk and Board. And so we are delighted at this time that it is resolved that Jamie Cross reported for the news and events on the statewide VSBA Media Honor Roll, her name will appear. And, uh, I know that she's way back there in the back, Ms. Cross, but we have a certificate that we would like to give to you at this time. Virginia School Boards Association Twenty Twenty-One Media Honor Roll Program honoring Ms. Jamie Cross. The news in advance, the Lynchburg School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. Your work has aided the community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the students who attend them. And this is from Janet Turner Giles, President, Gina Patterson, Executive Director, Virginia School Boards Association. And thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
At this time, we will now, uh, move to, um, J two, which is the School Health Advisory Update. Uh, Dr. Edwards, for Dr. Brown.
Yep, um, so this is the list of the members for the School Health Advisory Committee, as, um, Director Reeves talked about. Um, we also will be sending out, um, notification for anybody else who wants to join this fine group.
Yes, and, um, just for additional information, um, the Health Advisory Board, um, has chosen to meet monthly. Um, and they also break into subgroups. Um, they are working on, um, our health part of the strategic, um, plan and the mitigation plan. So they have goals and objectives that they are working on this school year, and they will be reporting out and giving updates, um, as we have our quarterly meetings or before, um, that time as well. Our committee, um, advisory committee do keep agendas, um, so we do have minutes. So we can post, um, once we get the directive from, um, Dr. Edwards, how she wants it in board docs. Um, we can post that immediately. So we carry over twenty members, but we have our twenty here. But we have members that fluctuate in and out for the advisory group, and we work with them, um, and it's a very personable meeting. So the information flows both ways. Um, as, as you could tell, um, when the Health Advisory, um, Committee presented, um, when we were at EC Glass. So before you, we have the list of twenty that we're asking for approval for.
Thank you, Director Brown. Any questions concerning the School Health Advisory Board, um, composition?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank Director Brown for all her efforts, sound like a great plan, and make a motion to approve the list of members of that committee.
Is there a second? Been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the list of the board members for the School Health Advisory, uh, Committee. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Scoop up a moment, Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you so much, and now J three, the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee Twenty One Twenty Two, Madam Clerk.
Um, and Dr. Bryant, are you up? There he is. So this is the CTE Committee. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bryant.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we have a great group in the CTE Advisory Committee. Um, they consist of business leaders, elected officials, parents, counselors, community members, um, teachers. So we, uh, we have a really great group. Um, I'd like for you to, I don't know if, do you have the list of the group?
It's an attachment.
It's an attachment, okay, thank you. So the only changes from last year, um, we have Ann, Ann, um, Ann Champion, she's going to be the leader for the Center of Economics at Lynchburg College or University of Lynchburg. And Tim Saunders is going to take the place of a previous board member, uh, for Virginia Career Works. And that's, those are the two changes. But other than that, we have a great group. So I ask for your approval.
All right, I see Mr. Harvey is a member of that group. Uh, you have the information here before you. I enjoyed attending the meeting that I did attend and, uh, you all are doing. Is, uh, so, any questions for him? Or is there a motion to approve the membership for that committee?
Move to approve the membership.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Is it seconded by Dr. Carter? Motion made by Dr. Nellis. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Scoop up a moment, Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up a moment, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Thank you so much, and thank you, sir. Thank you for your fine work. All right, K, Superintendent's comments.
Okay, I will try to be quick, given the hour. Um, first, I'd just like to give a huge shout-out and thank you to all of the staff at Lynchburg City Schools. Um, we opened our doors on August eleventh. Um, we had some rocky transportation challenges that we worked through. We had some COVID challenges that we worked through. Um, but all through that, my staff has just been absolutely fantastic in trying to make, um, the best learning environment welcoming and open arms for our students, um, many of whom have not been in school for quite some time. So kudos to them for everything that they're doing, that they continue to do. Um, and, you know, we heard the report from Mr. Luce earlier that did not go unnoticed. Um, and we certainly want to do everything to make sure that our staff are valued, appreciated, listened to, heard, and most importantly, they enjoy coming to work every single day. Um, so we will work on that. A lot has happened that I just want to give some thanks to One Community, One Voice for our Community Day in the, um, park, which started out rainy, um, but then turned out to be sunshine. Uh, and again, we had every school represented there and lots of staff out to support our children coming back to school. Um, thank you to the Boys and Girls Club for hosting, uh, Senator Kane, who came on August twenty-fifth and spoke with a group of community leaders, um, very much in support of schools and a lot of what we're doing, including early childhood. Um, we had a wonderful, uh, first trip on the James River with the environmental education sponsor, um, and our LCS, um, Ed Foundation. And we were glad to be able to get the kids out and about. And again, trying to do our best to make this school year as close to normal as possible for our children. But with all good things, uh, COVID has a way of interrupting some of that. So we may have to postpone a little bit of that until, um, our James River trip until, uh, the spring. Um, but, uh, we know the value of that community partnership, and we certainly want to continue it. Um, had a great day at, um, Friday at, uh, the ribbon cutting for the Burlington, um, store that is, um, in Lynchburg. They moved locations and donated five thousand dollars to Heritage Elementary School. So we thank them for their donation and support of a school that was within their zone, um, over there. Again, just a wonderful partnership that we have, um, with our community. And, um, lastly, just a huge thank you to, um, Gary Fink, Chief Zudema, and the entire Lynchburg Police Department Community Action Team that put a smile on this building's face, uh, when they came out last week and celebrated us with a cookout, pop-up cookout, um, right here, socially distanced. Um, and just a nice gesture, again, showing appreciation for us. And I just always appreciate our partnership that we have, um, with the police department. And then in final, none of this would be possible without our students, who have diligently returned to school. Um, they're giving their best, um, they're learning, they're participating. They're learning, they're participating, they're participating in sports. And kudos to our sports teams that are off to a great start. And we want to do everything possible to make sure that our students have five days of instruction available to them. They have an extracurricular activity, an athletic activity, everything possible, but we cannot do it alone. So again, I'm gonna end with, if you can get vaccinated without restrictions, if you can get vaccinated without complications, please do so. Please wear your mask in our schools. Please wear your mask on our property. Please protect children who have no other protection to protect themselves. And please help the people, like my staff, who are around the children in the buildings. Help us keep them safe. I think the gentleman, one of our students, said it best. I wear my mask to protect everyone else. I wear my mask to make sure that we have five days a week. I wear my mask to make sure that we have a sports program, an arts program, a theater program, that our children have extracurricular activities, they have in-school, after-school field trips. That's why I wear my mask, to make sure that we give children everything we possibly can. And this little bit of being uncomfortable for all the kids of Lynchburg City Schools is worth it. So I employ the community to join me in helping keep our schools open five days a week. Thank you.
Well said, Dr. Edwards. We'll now move to board comments, starting with Attorney Tros.
It's late enough, no comments.
Thank you, Dr. Tros. Dr. Brennan?
I could not say better what Dr. Edwards just talked about, as far as masks for the children, protecting and keeping the schools open. I do want to say that I did review the information that was presented to us at Public Comments last month about reasons not to wear a mask, and reviewed it quite thoroughly and interacted with the physician who sent it, and did not change my mind. A week later, there was a nice letter in the paper from the entire Lynchburg Academy of Medicine, also supporting the decision made by the board for masking the schools, and I think that topic is done.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Ms. Morrison?
No comments.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Carter?
I was able to attend a luncheon or a meeting hosted by Sonny Merriman Organization, where Senator Warner was there talking about the infrastructure, and also Transportation Secretary Shannon Valentine was there, able to ride on the school bus, electric school bus, Julie, and just to see all the details of that, and very nice, and it has speed and goes up a hill with no problems and all of that. But the most important thing is Senator Warner, he was one of the first politicians that I've heard just thanked the school board. He thanked every, every school board member in the state for, in the nation, really, for just their willingness to serve at during this time and how the school board is under attack. But thank, for thanking everyone. That was just so positive to hear. Also, just for us to think about wearing orange at one of our board meetings in October for the bullying thing, program, excuse me. And also just looking forward to having Jayden Scott. She'll be representing E C Glass for the second time. And also, I may not pronounce this, Yujin Kim for Heritage High School. So we'll have them here next, the next school board meeting in October. So excited about that. And just for Director Reeves, I think she had a book come out, published, and the name of it is something about peace? Oh, was that yours? Okay. Finding the Missing Peace in Our Lives, but peace.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Well said. Dr. Nellis?
I do want to extend my thanks to all the staff for the hard work and diligence and getting the kids back in school. Thank you. There's a lot of anxiety, uncertainty, especially with the rise in COVID. And I think what we learned last year when kids were remote is there are a lot of unintended consequences, and it really matters that we're working to get the kids in school and keep them in school. So thank you.
Well said, Dr. Nellis. Thank you. Dr. Senha?
Well, I can't really add to what people have said, so I won't. But I share their sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Gupta?
No more comments.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey?
I'll be brief. I agree what's been said regarding our staff, and I do want this to ring loud and clear to all of them. We really do appreciate all that you do. And I think this board truly, hopefully, it's obvious that we try our best to show that every single board meeting. I would encourage our community to do that as well. You know, when you're out, you pass a school bus, wave to the driver. When you're in the store, talk to a teacher, thank them for what they're doing. I think that we take them for granted. We take our staff for granted, the incredible work and the honorable work that they're doing. And I just encourage our community to just help get behind us in supporting our staff and letting them know that they are much, much appreciated for a very, very difficult job that they do each and every day.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Very well said. As we conclude our board meeting tonight, again, I want to thank Dr. Carter for mentioning one of our staff members' book. I've had a chance to look at it. I support every staff member. We have an awesome team. All of you are resourced almost on a daily basis of all of the commotion that is going on in communities across this nation. I do want to at least encourage the Lynchburg community that we're doing pretty good. As the leader of this board, I absolutely refuse to allow anyone to make us have to recess and not meet. At the same time, I want to make it clear that the only game that we ought to be playing and winning is in making sure that our kids are educated. And I pray that anyone who is playing games would join us in the only game that really matters, and that is educating our children. With that being said, the meeting is adjourned.